I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold Order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans? Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Phyllis, I'm here. I just wasn't a panelist, so I just got promoted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Uh, we have minutes from October 4th, 2021, public hearing minutes, and October 4th, 2021, committee of the whole meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm up for approval.
Okay.
Per of the minutes has been moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Shandra. Are there any additions or corrections? Grace?
Thanks. I just had some small ones that I emailed out, just adding um all the names to the council members, their full names, and just changing um the regular meeting. The same, I voted present because I was not able to pick up the packet. And I emailed those out and they're not super substantial.
Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
You're muted right now, Jayo.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I had one request to move the discussion on ALPRs up to the policy to the corresponding item. Uh, number eight, the ordinance number 2021-09-044, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2022 annual budget. Um, with budget amendment number three, so move that discussion up to that item.
And like combining them or doing the discussion first or?
Um, Carol?
I would move that we move both discussion items up to um after a public input, if that's the case.
I think the idea is you're probably going to want to have some discussion about the policy when you take up that item, that um ALPR item, so uh, having them just combined together was was um what I was suggesting.
Okay, makes sense.
Shandra, did you want to make a motion to move the other discussion item as well?
Um, yeah, I said I'm I moved to move both discussion of items up to after public input. I mean, if we want to put the policy discussion right next to the the number eight, that's fine too.
I have a question.
Yeah, Mary Alice and then I saw Charisse.
Do we have anybody who is supposed to be presenting on these resolutions um that are present right now that we need to be mindful of their time?
We do.
So I I would like to suggest that at least we take care of that business first, that they don't have to wait. So uh Stephanie, did or or for number item number six and number seven, do we have representatives for both of those or just for one of just for a visit champagne?
For both of them.
For both of them.
Yep, Carly McCray McKay is on also.
So I don't know, Shandra, if you would be amenable to having those first two resolutions done and then we jump to all the other stuff.
I know Charisse has been trying to hop in here for a moment too, so Charisse, do you want to?
I was just gonna say, when we get to the resolution, don't we have a moment of discussion time anyway? After we make a motion.
For the for the ordinance change? I think the idea was to have it kind of um before we're making that vote, but yeah, so essentially, yes, there would be some time for that discussion. Grace?
I'm not really sure if we're just weighing in here or what, but I would, uh, I think it makes sense. I would be down for combining the license plate discussion with that um ordinance. And keeping the other discussion at the end to go through the other business first and then be able to deal with that discussion.
I would suggest that for the convenience of our speakers, if we can move forward with that plan. There any objections? Do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the clerk please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Bishop?
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I I um, I don't even know what we're voting on. It was two suggestions and then there wasn't even a second yet, so I didn't.
I apologize. Um, probably getting the procedure wrong. The my understanding is we're voting on moving the ALPR discussion item to go with that ordinance and leaving the other discussion item uh where it was previously.
I see, yeah.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
That's everybody.
Thank you. I think that motion passes. Um, next, we have um public input. First hand, I see is Alan Max Axelrod.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, awesome. Okay, uh, I'm just waiting for the clock to show up. Sorry about that. Thank you. So uh, my name is Alan Max Axelrod, resident of Urbana, campaign lead of No Ammon Shutoffs. I'm going to start with a simple comment on that matter. Since August 3rd, our cumulative caseload since the entire pandemic increased, depending on how you want to count, fourteen to sixteen percent. Our average caseload has been over two thousand cases a day since August 3rd. Thankfully, it seems to be flatlining. The rate of decrease is not encouraging. And with more evictions being posted, this makes our jobs a heck of a lot harder. So I want to thank the members of this city council for their letter last week calling on the sheriff to act. It is regretful that he is seemingly admitting that the Smile Politely article about him was false last year about the suspension of evictions and it's one of these sort of small city tropes, I guess, where people pretend that they are in a vacuum. And they cannot do anything when internal advocacy matters a great deal. And also, yes, he can. He's prioritizing his office over people's lives, and that is unacceptable. I also want to thank uh Jayakul Seti and Shandra Bishop for their memo. I think that it is appropriately worded, given the circumstances. Um, I did want to note one thing, just one regarding my public comments uh about the Community Emergency Services and Supports Act, always known as the Stefan Edward Watts Act. Uh, the effective date is January 1st, 2022. And so what that means is that that is when the rules apply for when there is the response defined in that act. The deadline for implementation is January 1st, 2023. I mentioned that actually in my public comments when it said, when we were talking about the duration of the Rosecrance Grant. And it going right through that. Now, I understand that there's this need to follow up with folks after incidences. But with cops? I don't really know if that has any factual basis behind it, and I'd be very interested to hear what there may be. And where's this grant from? That'd be, I think, really encouraging to know. I'm sure if I were more prepared, I would have additional remarks. I'm going to end early tonight. Have a good night.
All right, next, we have Brandy M. McCoy.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, I'm Brandy McCoy, Urbana resident. Um, I just have a quick comment. Um, I would like to um advocate for the town hall meeting um in regards or meetings. Um, in regards to the license plate readers, um, I don't fully understand why that is an in-person, um, especially an in-person only event. If we're having our council meetings virtual for public safety reasons, um, I I would like to advocate that we also have virtual accessibility to those town hall meetings for public safety reasons. Um, and yeah, that's that's just what I wanted to drop in today.
Thank you. My next way of Haran Kabatzi.
Hi, everyone. Um, I wanted to speak on the eviction crisis again. Um, first of all, thank you for having me and honored to present last week. Um, and thank you for all signing the letter uh that went to the sheriff. Um, I was really glad to see that. Um, we did finally hear back from the sheriff regarding our efforts and our call, and he basically said, he doesn't, you know, he doesn't believe it's his position this time to extend the moratorium that was put in place last year. And he, you know, essentially said his hands are tied uh due to the court. And this is the 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 issue with this is that we we know that an eviction moratorium is possible. You know, one was put in place locally last year. Um, and and it's not clear to us, you know, does the sheriff support it? Um, but the the court is in the way. Has the sheriff spoken to the court at all? Because we we know that this, we don't know that a moratorium is possible. So, you know, I I'm a little, I'm a little confused on what the sheriff's position is, you know, regarding, you know, what what is the obstacle here? We know, we know, and we know a moratorium is possible. You know, is is the court not willing to cooperate? Has the sheriff spoken to the court? Um, you know, I I think that response, you know, it's it's good to hear something, but it leaves a lot of questions. Um, so so in terms of following up on city council's letter, uh, I I know I spoke last week, and I I've spoken to some council members about this, um, you know, the possibility of a resolution uh that will be a little more expensive than with a letter. Given this response, um, bringing in the circuit court, uh, I I think potentially a logical next step might be uh expanding this call on the sheriff to the circuit court as well. Um, because again, we know a moratorium is possible. Um, and and at the most, it'll take the sheriff uh and and the court to work together on it. Uh, uh, so a few weeks ago, uh, myself and some other members have all drafted a a resolution where we'd love to work with, you know, anyone in city council to to make that happen. Um, to sort of expand the call that was given last week upon the sheriff to the circuit court uh to really make sure that we can get this eviction moratorium back in place. Um, regarding the moratorium that was put in place last year, it was put in place because of the public health emergency. I think, you know, any public health authority you consult, it will tell you the public health emergency is continuing. As I cited in many statistics last week, the the eviction crisis is, you know, very serious. Thirteen percent of all renters in the county are at risk of eviction. Um, we're seeing, you know, tens of millions of dollars in rent debt. And so I think the urgency is there, the the need, the justification that existed for last year's eviction moratorium is still there. Uh, all we need to do is figure out what is preventing it from happening. So I would, you know, ask ask the council, call the city council to look into how we can expand this call that we gave last week on the sheriff to the circuit court. Uh, I would I would propose a resolution. I would be happy to, you know, help anyone working on a resolution. Again, we've already drafted something. Um, because we've got to keep this call going until we have a moratorium on the table. Uh, we know that it can happen, um, and I think we're definitely making progress. Uh, and if we spend this call to everyone who needs to act, I think we can do what we need to do, protect the renters in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Stacy Gloss.
There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I'm Stacy Gloss, and I'm a member of Ben the Ark Jewish Action and Champagne Urbana, which is a social justice organization um in our community. Um, I am here tonight to speak to the issue of ALPRs in our community. And I would um certainly appreciate more time for um the community to be able to consider the appropriateness of ALPRs for the community and for the city council members to do not forward the um ordinance this evening to city council for approval. Um, I have spent the last uh several several days last week as well as um an entire day yesterday and um time this morning, uh, learning as much as I can about ALPRs, um, legal issues around them, privacy issues around them. Um, I've I've spent time actually writing a a three-page paper that I'm not going to be reading here um tonight, but I will forward to the city council afterwards um on on the on the issues that have been coming up um around the country and in cases regarding um the legal use of and the policies of of using the ALPRs. Um, I only this evening had a chance to review the um the the policy item that was included in the packet that appears to have been forwarded by the police department. So this would be the uh draft automated license plate readers um um policy document. I'm sure that I will have more questions on on that policy document. I am curious at this point um who was consulted from the community in in preparation of of the draft ALPR policy. And I would like to know if the Civilian Police Review Board or the Human Relations Commission, if if anyone from either of these commissions were included in um in drafting this policy, as I know that both have been uh deeply um involved with with issues of community and and policing in Urbana. Um, let's see there. I am concerned about the deployment. Um, and I think that there are are several reasons for cause for concern. And and I I believe that I'm probably not the only one here tonight speaking. Um, and that will have that will have questions for for the presentation later and for the ordinance discussion. So I will actually end it there. Um, and and thank you for the discussion on this this evening.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Diane Orr.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Good evening. Um, I am also part of the leadership of Ben the Ark Jewish Action. We at Ben the Ark Jewish Action Champagne Urbana are concerned about the effect of license plate readers on the already marginalized communities of black and brown people among us. If the goal of license plate readers is to reduce gun violence, and I believe that it is, our research has shown that there is no clear evidence that they do so. We acknowledge that the technology of license plate readers may assist police in solving crimes. But it is yet to be determined if gun violence is among those crimes. We also fear that the purchase of surveillance equipment from Flock coincides with the proposal by Chapin Rose and other Republican state lawmakers to strengthen criminal charges in Illinois, including charging minors convicted of auto theft to be tried in adult court, something to which I strongly disagree. For the reasons stated above, we ask that the passage of the bill to buy license plate readers be held until there has been ample time to gather community input and more data. My specific questions are these. What are the mental and psychological harms documented by people in communities living under constant surveillance? When gun violence ebbs, are ALPRs still considered a necessary expenditure? In other words, once they're installed, are they in place forever? Or will they be taken down in accordance with the decrease in gun violence? And the third question is, will information be shared with ICE either directly or inadvertently? Um, I will forward these questions to the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I look forward to more dialogue concerning ALPRs. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Gus Wood.
All right. Good evening. Can you care about hear me? All right. Gus Wood, um, resident of Urbana, organizer for the Abu Tu Project Champagne Urbana. The Abu Tu Project, we are disappointed to learn that the Urbana City Council is considering voting to purchase license plate readers, especially considering the well-documented controversial reputation and the questionable value of the readers. People need more information on their effectiveness to justify the installation of such invasive technology. Even more troubling is that the city has not provided the citizens a chance for detailed policy discussions on how the council will govern the use of these cameras. The problem lies within the use of license plate readers. The city has not presented verifiable data to prove this technology reduces gun violence. In fact, researchers at City Lab estimate that between 2016 and 2017, a hundred and seventy-three law enforcement agencies collectively scanned 2.5 billion license plates. However, those same agencies never reported the effect of this technology on reducing violent crime, nor how they use the license plate scans. Also, the Bureau of Justice statistic states that ninety-three percent of police departments in cities with populations of one million or more use their own license plate readers, which has scanned an estimated 2,000 plates per minute. With such widespread use of this equipment, the fact that there are no reports on this effectiveness should be cause for concern. Interestingly, violent crime has not quote unquote fallen since the implementation of license plate readers in these other spaces, which points to a serious contradiction. No decrease in violence, but a drastic increase in surveillance and the potential for violation of civil liberties. The research also notes a high error rate. The technology can produce inaccurate hot lists, wrongly identifying motorists as suspects in the commission of crimes. If hot lists are not consistently checked, individuals could be pulled over by police for a false claim of their license being suspended or their car, quote unquote, fitting the description of a vehicle wanted in an investigation. Research also shows that inaccurate license plate readers are very common. In Vallejo, California, they found that close to thirty-seven percent of the scans were misreads. This is an exceptionally high error rate for a so-called new wave technology. It can mean life, death, or freedom for many individuals. The cameras also do not account for the fact that many family members and friends, especially in low-income areas, share cars, putting poorer black and brown people at higher surveillance and risk of misidentification. The NYPD uses license plate readers for its widespread surveillance program on Muslim people in New York and New Jersey. In the early 2010s in Oakland, license plate readers were placed in predominantly black and brown neighborhoods, despite the fact that the automobile crimes and offenses occurred elsewhere in the city. In other words, there is not enough evidence that license plate readers are safe and less prone to errors to justify their purchase than use anywhere. In fact, the evidence against this technology is disproportionately used to target poor black and brown communities. The fact that the license plate reader company has zero data to show the effectiveness of these devices, while dozens of studies show the dangers of the technology, should be cause enough to delay the vote or to also vote no. We call on the city council of Urbana, the elected representatives, to demand transparent data on the use and effectiveness of such invasive and dangerous technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Miriam.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is Miriam Larson. I live in Urbana, and I use pronounced she, her, hers. Um, I really appreciate Gus Wood's statement um and the Lunta Project and the extensive research that he just cited, as well as Ben the Ark's statements. I just have a couple other things to add in my opposition to our adoption of license plate readers in Urbana. Um, during the September 20th meeting, Mayor Marlin acknowledged that we need to look at root causes and long-term solutions. I think even these short-term solutions have the potential for long-term impacts that we must consider. First and foremost, as others have noted, we have no evidence that these tools work. In fact, there's more evidence of harm that they perpetuate. For example, in Marin County, the sheriff um shared data with ICE and um the CBP, the Customs and Border Patrol, in ways that broke California law, not to mention increasing the fear of the police um among folks who are immigrants. In August in twenty of 2020 in Colorado, license plate readers misidentified a stolen vehicle. The police pulled over a car with a black family, including two children, who were made to lay down on their stomachs in a parking lot. Um, and this went, uh, this was caught on video by a bystander, went viral on um on Twitter, and these are examples of ways in which license plate readers can increase trauma instead of addressing the uh the current harm that we're experiencing here in Urbana. People say this is a cost-effective solution, um, but there's also, again, no evidence, and there are so many other ways we could use these funds um towards addressing the the deep hurt and fear that we're experiencing. So I strongly encourage us to consider other options. Um, I think the the preponderance of of surveillance tools um it just raises our fear, and this is really a moment for us to come together um and connect and support those who are grieving um and get to know each other better, um, not to watch each other with more fear and skepticism. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kanita Fay.
Sure. All right.
Hello, hello. This is Steve Fay, actually, uh, Kanita's husband speaking. Um, yeah. Yes, dear council members, my name is Steve Fay. I'm a resident of Urbana from Ward 7, and I would like to thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Tonight, I'm before you to talk about public safety. I, I'm aware that several of the preceding comments have been directing you to delay the vote to a lot more time. I would like to mention that when 60 bullets, over 60 bullets, are unloaded into one house in a matter of minutes, we don't have a lot more time. This is, people are bleeding right now. As we all know, Urbana and our neighboring cities are experiencing a lot of gun violence. Our youth have been shot and killed. Even the Champagne Fire Department has been shot at. We understand that this crisis needs a long-term and short-term solutions, and we appreciate that you are trying to learn and understand all the possible solutions and their implications. We hope that you, our elected officials, will acknowledge that this is an emergency. In June, Ms. Linda Turnbull submitted a petition in support of a closed-circuit, closed-circuit television system that can help identify the shooter along with better lighting on streets. More than 400 signatures were collected, many of whom reside in high-crime areas in Wards 3, 5, and 7. Since then, many community, community leaders, including Minnie Pearson, the president of the NAACP Champagne County Branch, have shown their support in using technologies such as the Automatic License Plate Readers, or ALPRs as they are commonly known. Since then, the City of Champagne has approved the use of the ALPRs for the next two years. Today, we have submitted a petition of automatic license plate readers signed by 118 citizens from different wards across Urbana. We ask that you vote to pass the use of the Automatic License Plate Readers so that our city will have the infrastructure to work collaboratively in a timely manner with other cities in Champagne County. This position, this petition reads, "Dear members of the Urbana City Council, as citizens of Urbana who are concerned about exponential increase of gun violence and retaliatory shootings in our city, we support automatic license plate readers, ALPRs, for the following reasons: Number one, ALPRs are investigative, are an investigative tool that can help identify vehicles involved in shootings and other crimes. Secondly, ALPRs provide information that witnesses and victims are unable, unwilling, or afraid to provide. Thirdly, ALPRs improve countywide collaboration across jurisdictions to solve shootings and other crimes. Fourth, ALPRs remove human error and bias from vehicle identification. Fifthly, ALPRs are cost-effective, cost-effective, and can be strategically deployed. Number six, ALPR data is owned and protected by the city. Number seven, ALPRs can help disrupt the pattern of retaliatory shootings that has traumatized families and neighborhoods in recent years, and in recent days, I should say. Again, thank you for your time, service, and consideration. Sincerely, Urbana citizens." Thank you very much. I will hope that you will give this the, the sincere consideration that it deserves. I understand that there are many concerns about privacy, how the data will be used, but we also have a problem with people dying needlessly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Spindell.
Hi, can you hear me? Dear council members and mayor, this is Carol Spindell, and the Director of Communications for the ACLU of Champagne County, our local chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. We at the Champagne County ACLU, in consultation with ACLU of Illinois, understand the desire of the Urbana community to do something quickly about the rising tide of gun violence. We sympathize with everyone directly affected by this violence and with those whose daily lives are constrained by the threat of violence. We also realize that police officers face increased danger as they carry out their duties and protect our community. We would like to say, too, that we appreciate the NAACP's efforts to create a forum for public discussion of this issue. We urge those discussions be made available to access online so that all community members can participate. We have read the draft policy, and it does satisfy some of the concerns we've raised with the city. However, we continue to question the acquisition of this new type of surveillance. In our desire to take action, we must make sure we do not limit the civil liberties of Urbana community members or cause harm. In a trial in Vallejo, California, license plate readers had an error rate of 35 and 37%. This is an extremely high error rate. What will happen to those people who are mistakenly pulled over or who are mistakenly placed on a hit list? What recourse will they have? And what access will Flock, the company marketing the technology, have to the data about our community, and what will they do with it? Will they sell it to other communities? Will they share it with other law enforcement agencies? How can we be sure what they are doing with our data? We have worked together with the NAACP to make policing more equitable in Urbana, and we must be careful not to embrace a technology that could undo some of that progress. The black and brown communities in particular have been both overpoliced and underserved. They deserve to be better served and to have a voice in what sorts of protection and policies might best serve them before our council takes this step. Thank you for your careful attention to this issue. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Jennifer Roth.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Roth, and like Stacy Gloss and Diane Orr, I'm part of the leadership of Ben the Ark Jewish Action of Champagne, Urbana. First, I want to acknowledge that the area where I live has not been highly affected by the increase in shootings, and thus, I'm not prepared to tell people in more affected areas what they need. But I am curious about the process by which it was decided that ALPRs were what was needed, and about whether that process was led by members of the most affected communities or by police and city officials. I'm curious whether the city and the police asked the community, "We have $100,000, $150,000 to spend on fighting, on combating shootings. What do you need, and how do you think we should spend that money?" Or was it more of a top-down message, saying, "This is what we're willing to do"? No matter what the final decision is on installing ALPRs, there are some concerns that need to be addressed. Right now, ALPRs are being promoted as a way to solve shooting cases, but over time, if they're installed and people get used to them being there, might we see a mission creep where they start to be used for other purposes? What are the criteria that determine who can access the data, both within the police department and outside the police department, and under what circumstances, and how will this policy be enforced? Finally, I want to know if anyone has presented to the city any independent data compiled by organizations other than Flock Safety or police departments on the effectiveness of these systems, and whether that effectiveness is sufficient to justify the opportunity costs for other things that this money might, might be spent on. Flock Safety and the Chief of Police presented information to the City Council less than a month ago, and even then, it seemed like the decision had mostly been made, with the city already pushing for ALPRs on its webpage. While I understand that the increase in shootings is alarming, and it's reasonable for this to inspire swift action, I'm concerned that there hasn't been enough time for gathering community feedback as well as assessing the likely effectiveness of this system and coming up with a plan to safeguard civil liberties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ben Theobald.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm ready to speak. My name is Ben Theobald. I am a resident of Urbana. I just first would like to thank you for, at least, writing that letter to the endorsing the need for eviction moratorium. It is unfortunate that the county sheriff did not go ahead and stop evictions. I've already mentioned that last week. Unfortunately, this is probably just the way they're gonna go, and just unfortunately, this is gonna be very problematic, especially now as we get now more into the fall and as temperatures go down, and now people's are gonna, their people's lives are gonna get more difficult. I already saw a story about a, of a girl who's been dealing with homelessness, and it's not, it's, it's a difficult situation. I just want to say that the Party for Socialism Liberation will be having an event this Friday at 3:00 PM. I believe it will be like the last one in front of the county sheriff's office. It's Friday at 3:00 PM, and just to let you, and since we've been talking about the ALPR, just to let people know that those meetings are Thursday, October 28th, 5:30 to 7:30, and Friday, October 29th, 1 to 3:00 PM. All I think enough has been said about the license plate reader, readers. I have my qualms about them, about how effective they are. There's all this, you can, well, I'll just say Google plenty of situations where there have been license plate readers and technology mistakes, and obviously, privacy issues. But that's just, that's, but I think enough, enough has been said about that. And as also mentioned before, back to the eviction moratoriums, if we, I think if it's possible for the council to maybe work with the circuit courts. I, I know it's gonna be more effort, but if, I really think we need to do all, all that we can to make sure people, to protect people's rights, the housing, to protect people's, because I assure you, some of these are parents that have kids in school, and this is gonna be incredibly difficult. But with that, I yield the rest of my time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next, we have Eddie Pratt Jr.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hmm, great. Eddie Pratt Jr., resident of Urbana. I've been particularly loud about how I feel about LPRs and, you know, the data and everything, and other speakers on this call have also alluded to saying. But before I even get into that, I want to thank you all as a body for standing present for, for the ongoing issue that is the lack of an eviction moratorium and how important that is coming into these later, cooler, colder months. But again, let's get into this meat and potatoes. I'm not gonna waste my time going back around through the same facts that have been already pounded into your brains at this point. But what I'm going to elaborate on is exactly why I have particular anxieties about all of this. And it is a particular safety concern, and for people like me, it is very much so a safety concern. So I'm gonna rip off a Band-Aid right now. About this time last year, I did a reaction video to a police sympathizing organization's rally. And when I did, in that particular reaction video, did it on Facebook, I barely had my logo of my, of my, my work t-shirt on, right? So two days later, you have, oh, almost endless lines of people who have the same blue line bumper sticker coming through my job, in which, at that point, was just a side job, little car wash job. They're all coming through there. This is not a normal occurrence. And then, a maniacal police car comes through there, which I found to be particularly weird. But, um, all of this from a Facebook status. Now, let's not pretend as if Back to Blue and the police are not the same, because they are, because they are. So if we're talking about giving people who would readily retaliate against people for their opinions, I am not the first. I probably will not be the last. There are other people, I'm not gonna just put their names out there like that, who have also been retaliated by the police for simply standing up for what they believe in. So with the addition of the possibility of having this technology in those same people's hands, you are putting people's lives in danger. And if we're gonna be frank, we're talking about people like me. So, um, but that's just one small microcosm, one little, you know, collateral damage of such things, right? I mean, what's gonna happen to other black people when they're just driving a white car that may have turned up on a hot list as a white car? You tell me where that, where that ends up. I, I'm sure that, like, you know, I, I get it. We all want to do something. We felt like we gotta do something. The fact of the matter is, if we wasn't attacking inequity, like we should have been, we wouldn't feel in this way right now, but here we are. Thank you.
That is your time. Thank you. And we have David Young.
Hi, this is David. David Young. I live in Ward 4. I've been following the conversation about automated, automatic license plate readers, or ALPRs, with concern. I agree with a lot of the opposition to plate readers, that you've already heard tonight. I'm responding to the draft Urbana policy on ALPRs. The draft policies on ALPRs is not enough to protect the public from unrestricted surveillance. The draft policy itself mentions an important problem with the ALPRs, saying, "The ALPR database is not in the possession of the City of Urbana. The Chief of Police shall direct that all ALPR data collected shall be purged from the ALPR database after 30 days." End quote. "Urbana cannot govern the use of a database that it does not possess. A private ALPR vendor, such as Flock Safety, will possess the database. Flock Safety's employees and contractors are neither elected officials nor police officers sworn to uphold the U.S. Constitution. Neither duty nor the threat of punishment obligates them to protect the citizens of Urbana from misuse of ALPR recordings. If the vendor possesses the database, then the Chief of Police can direct that the vendor purge information, but the vendor need not follow that direction. Flock Safety's privacy policy states that they reserve the right to preserve ALPR, ALPR recordings and to disclose them to third parties according to their, quote, "good faith beliefs" about protecting others' rights, property, or safety." They are telling us that they can and they will substitute their judgment for Urbana's. Again, we are not talking about sworn police or government officials here, and it's not clear how the Chief of Police or the City Council would stop a vendor from blatantly misusing recordings. The privacy policy may as well say, "So sue us." There are many issues that Urbana needs to consider before adopting ALPRs. I think that there can be no question, the data, database must be under the strict control of local authorities. That control will be hard to establish under many ALPR designs. It will be virtually impossible to control Flock Safety's design. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That was the last hand I saw. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sarah Nixon.
Hello. Good evening, City Council. This is Sarah Nixon and I'm here tonight as a voice for people of all ages, of all genders targeted by sexual predators in police uniforms. I will begin by emphasizing one of twenty concerns drafted by Alderman Christopher Evans, who says, and this one is number twenty on his list. Quote, "The public has not been given a written policy as to what are the punishments when officers abuse the license plate reader system to monitor ex-girlfriends, crushes, journalists, or protesters." I join the council's and the public's overwhelming call to delay the vote to fund the uh to fund A L P Rs until the council is fully informed as to relevant information, data, and detailed comprehensive usage and misuse policies um have been drafted and approved. And I want to bring to the council's attention three recent cases of predatory law enforcement in Urbana uh and Champaign abusing their powers and abusing law enforcement technology in order to uh to facilitate the commission of sexual assault crimes against the trusting public. I also want to emphasize that Champaign County has a horrendous track record in holding these predators accountable. First, there was Gerald Sandage at the University of Illinois, police officer who worked in that department for twelve years. Sandage misused law enforcement resources, police databases, and security cameras to spy on and get information on women who became his victims on and off campus. His abuse of police resources including included photos of women taken without their consent. We know that he committed multiple rapes of women whom he stalked and spied upon using law enforcement technology in two thousand and eighteen and going as far back as two thousand and twelve. And those were just the victims who came forward. How many more also exist who did not? Any domestic violence professional and frankly, anyone with a brain can tell you that additional silenced victims are very, very likely. Just checking my time. The attitude and I'm trying to summarize my next comment, but the attitude and procedure that was applied in that case uh was one uh marked by cover up and silencing um silencing of the victims. Um, the second example that you should know about is Kurt Short. You can read about that case in an article published in two thousand and sixteen in the Public Eye. He uh Officer Kurt Urbana Police Department Officer Kurt Short used police communication systems to track his victim to her residence where he raped her. Um. The third example is rapist Jared Gale, a Champaign police officer who was honored as Officer of the Year just one year before he pled guilty to aggravated criminal sexual abuse. You can read about that case in another article also published in the Public Eye, and it points out that our criminal justice system uh again failed the victims uh because the officers uh or the perpetrators um carried a badge. I have more to say. I don't think I have time, so I think I'll have to leave it there. Um. But I hope this gives you a a sense of the scope of of the problems that um lie ahead. And that again is just one of twenty uh very serious concerns with what you're you're being asked to approve.
That is the last hand I see currently raised. I think there was one more, but it went down. So just wanna check and see if there's anyone else who would like to speak. Right. With that, we will move on to presentations. Are there any presentations tonight? Nope. Alright. Alright, and are there any staff reports? Yes, Carol.
I had a couple of items I just wanted to highlight for folks. Um, uh, we we sent out a press release last week. Um, but I just wanted to announce here as well that the um fall uh leaf collection dates have been announced. So it's the week of November first through the fifth, November fifteenth through the nineteenth, and November twenty ninth through December third. And um I know most people are aware of this, but we need you to put the leaves in thirty gallon paper lawn and garden bags and set them out um on the curb um on your scheduled use cycle day. They need to be out by six o'clock in the morning. And we only take leaves and non non woody plant materials. And I just wanna remind people, we we compost all of this material. So we can't take branches and um anything, anything large like a tree limb. And neither can we accept uh bags that are taped because the tape is um inconsistent with the composting efforts. And I also just wanna remind everyone of um Vince Gustafson's report about a month ago that we did not get a private vendor to bid on this work. And so we are shifting our internal forces into an all hands on deck mode to get this to get this pickup done. So we're really asking for the public's cooperation in complying with our request to have the leaves properly bagged. Sometimes people uh rake them or blow them and into the um into the street, into the gutter. We simply do not have the time or and we're not, we're not set up to to clean up leaves in that manner. They need to be bagged. So I hope people will be flexible with us. If they miss you on your scheduled day, they'll be there the next day. This is new for us. So I ask people to to just be patient and and we will get to you. So that's that's the first thing. The second thing is I want to um make sure everyone is aware that we're having a ceremonial groundbreaking for the Hotel Royer project. I think people are aware it's already under construction, but we wanted to have a little sort of um celebration of the commencement of construction, and that's going to be October twenty eighth at two P M outside the hotel. Um, and then the last thing I would mention is that I sent um council members a proposal for um facilitation of your um council goal setting and priority setting efforts and um I would appreciate any feedback. I've heard back from one council member so far. So when you get a chance, if you could give me some feedback on that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to ordinances and resolutions.
I think the mayor might have had something also. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
Thanks. I just wanted to uh repeat the fact that there will be two town halls co-sponsored by the City of Urbana and the N double A C P on Thursday, October twenty eighth, five thirty to seven thirty P M, Friday, October twenty ninth, one to three P M. These will be at Vineyard Church in person. Um, masks will be required and we're holding it there it basically in order to have the space to socially distance. Um, we also will be streaming the town halls live from vineyards, so people will be able to watch at home. And um it input and it will be noticed as a public meeting, so there will be a provision for public input. But the program at this point, at the request of N double A C G, is going to focus on one, giving an overview of what A L P Rs are. Number two, going into the policy surrounding their use, and then there will be time for Q and A. So um just wanted to let you know about that. And I will repeat Carol's uh admonition about raking leaves into the street. Not only do we not have the ability to pick them up out of the street efficiently, they clog up the storm drains and can contribute drastically to flooding in the streets. And so that's a real concern in the fall anyway, when we have leaves in the street and then we get heavy rains. But it it also is in violation of the city ordinance. So please encourage your constituents to not rake leaves into the street. We have a lot of turnover in this town and people move from other areas where they do do that, but we cannot um manage it here. So they have to be bagged and keep the leaves out of the street. Thank you.
Are there any other staff reports? Grace, I see you. I just wanna make sure I'm not cutting off any other city staff. Grace, it's a wanna hop in?
Yeah, uh, question, right. We can ask questions for the staff report. Yeah, um, I pointed to the town halls. Um, it sounds like they will be broadcasted. But is there um an opportunity for virtual participation, either verbally through Zoom or written? And then second question is if we'll have a report of those sessions?
At this point, there's no um provision for live participation remotely, but they can be viewed remotely and people can um send comments, of course, to City Council afterwards.
And will there be kind of a report of those sessions and any written input compiled?
Uh, a summary of the the sessions?
Yeah, of the input and questions. Cuz I might understand was that this was also like more community listening more than giving information to the public, or at least both getting some input.
The request, well, yeah, the request we had from the N double A C P was also to provide information because um President Pearson felt that there was, you know, people still didn't understand what these were and the difference between a video camera and a license plate reader, and there was some misunderstanding. So will we, we will be providing um some basic information about the L P Rs. And then um I think the most valuable part of the session will be the Q and A.
So will we get any kind of report on any gathered there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And it's a public meeting, so there will be minutes.
Okay, um, now moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Um, my understanding of the discussion around the first two is going to happen together. So that's for resolution number twenty twenty one dash one zero dash zero four four R, Resolution Improving and Authorizing the Execution of a Community Partnership Agreement Champagne County Economic Development Corporation FY twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and Resolution number twenty twenty one dash ten dash zero four R, Resolution Improving and Authorizing the Execution of a Community Partnership Agreement Vis- Champagne County FY twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. We will vote on these separately or discuss them separately, but uh just to get this started, got one presentation.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. I'm Stephanie McMahon, Economic Development Supervisor. And thanks for letting us present these together. The E D C and V C C work together, so they're gonna have a little crossover in their report back to you. But tonight I'm bringing you two resolutions for proposed partnership agreements with our regional partners, the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation and Visit Champagne County, our Tourism and Convention Bureau. Champagne County E D C provides great value to the city of Urbana through various initiatives. Many of these are ongoing, such as their Made in Champagne County program, promoting regional manufacturers, their annual innovation celebration highlighting regional creative talent, marketing the region as a great place to live and work through their You're Welcome CU campaign, and their continued support of the Willard Airport's growth and development. The E D C supports our local businesses by housing the CU Small Business Development Center, which offers counseling services, training webinars, and this past year gave untold hours of instruction on applying for COVID relief grants. The International Trade Center also housed at the E D C supports our local businesses and works with the E D C to attract new industry to our communities. E D C and S B D C staff provide direct services that support Urbana's overarching economic development goals. These services include retention visits with major employers, developer and business lead generation, coordination with state agencies, and regional public-private coordination. When the pandemic began in early twenty twenty, Executive Director of the E D C Carly McCory McKay led the charge in coordinating meetings and initiatives with Champagne County leaders, including Urbana staff who have all worked together to create the Champagne County Safe Campaign, distribute masks, flyers, and information on vaccines and safe practices. Most recently, the E D C was approved by the State of Illinois to become a community navigator to assist small and minority-owned businesses in finding resources to overcome the economic hardship caused by the pandemic. The E D C partnership agreement being proposed tonight follows the same format as last year's agreement with a ten thousand dollar increase in the funding from last year for a total contribution of thirty eight thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars. The City of Urbana's Senior Advisor for Integrative Strategy Development Andrea Rudy serves on the E D C Board as the City of Urbana representative. The Visit Champagne County is another valuable partner to Urbana. Executive Direct Director Jane Deluse and her team work as the official tourism destination, marketing, and management organization to promote Champagne County. V C C markets the region through various channels, including an interactive website with event calendar, social media, and an annual visitor's guide. V C C works to bring a variety of events to the of events to the region, such as the American Junior Golf Association Tournament that was held at the Urbana Country Club this past summer. These events entice visitors to enjoy our hospitality-related businesses, including restaurants, hotels, and other attractions, which provide financial gain to the city of Urbana through tax revenue, direct spending, and generated payroll. V C C also played a key role in the Champagne County leaders' effort to curb the impact of the virus on our community these past eighteen months. The V C C team stepped in to create numerous campaigns promoting safe practices in support of our citizens and businesses. The tourism industry was decimated by the pandemic and V C C worked tirelessly and creatively to help support those businesses in a variety of ways, such as a virtual visitor guide instead of the normal printed one, a takeout edition of Annual Restaurant Week, and they even granted hospitality relief funds to struggling businesses from their foundation. This past year, V C C began working on reopening plan for, oh, they began rea- working on the reopening plan long before the governor even let us know it was coming. And they released the We Are Ready campaign to welcome back visitors as soon as they were able. Uh, this past year, they started working on the Champagne County African-American Culture and Heritage Trail. And they'll also be sharing more about a new CU Ambassador's Program that was recently rolled out with the E D C. The partnership agreement for V C C is similar in format to last year's agreement, except for an increase of ten thousand dollars, making the proposed total contribution twenty thousand dollars. Bridgette Boyhan, the city's communications specialist, serves as our representative on the Visit Champagne County Board of Directors. Um, and tonight both Carly and Jane are here and have reports for you, and I think the mayor also wanted to say a few words.
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation and the Visit Champagne County, Carly McCrory McCray, Jane Deluse and their McKay, I'm sorry, and Jane Deluse and their staff have been invaluable partners throughout the past eighteen months during the pandemic. On top of everything they've done on a regular basis, they have provided leadership in many different ways. Early days, it was getting PPP and the P P E and helping people navigate the various grants available. It was direct support to families working in the hospitality industry. Any public space you went into during the past two years was made safer by the efforts and through the efforts of these two organizations. And they complemented, they supplemented our efforts here at the city. And they were, they are leaders in Champagne Countywide in um the entire response to the pandemic. So I I I cannot emphasize enough how valuable to the city of Urbana their efforts have been, and that's why I recommended and it uh the increase to each of them, to the organization. City of Urbana has funded these organizations for many years, and you heard all about their their regular efforts. And and keep in mind, everything they did COVID-related, most of that was in addition to their normal tasks, just like all the rest of us. So so I want to express our appreciation for their efforts and um urge you to support our continued partnership and um very, very positive working relationships with these organizations. And I also want to shout and give a shout out to our own terrific economic development staff who have partnered with these organizations and others in Champagne County to um to get us through the last year. Your small businesses, your employees, the jobs generated by these small businesses are um are directly connected to the efforts of organizations like the E D C and V C C. So looking forward to your presentations.
Thank you, Stephanie, for the introduction and Mayor Merlin for your comments. I am going to share my screen. Okay, can everyone see? Okay, great. As Mayor Merlin and Stephanie said, my name is Carly McCory McKay. I'm the Executive Director of the Champagne County Economic Development Corporation and have been in this role for a few years, but with the organization since 2012. So just a little refresher about who we are and what we do. We are a public private entity, so we work across Champagne County on a variety of efforts to really focus on job creation and retention, small business development, and general promotion of quality of life. But I think one of the most critical things that we do is we work with a lot of partners across the county, both on the public and the private side to really advance these efforts. So that includes higher educational institutions, a lot of people in the private industry, and then also our municipalities here in Champagne County as well. And we work very closely with the economic development team at the City of Urbana to accomplish a lot of these goals. We are led.
I don't think your slides are advancing. I don't know if other folks are seeing the same thing, that it's more of the list of slides instead of the there. Yeah, that's closer.
Let's see.
Got kind of like the speaker's view now. Which is visible, that'll work.
Okay, all right, sorry. Okay. Yeah. All right, so we are led by a strategic plan that we released last year called Engage. And it has seven different areas of focus, everything from workforce development to transportation and logistics. But I think one of the most critical things and a part of a lot of what we do is the business outreach and industry engagement. So this is really important because it involves varying, having very close relationships and trustworthy relationships with a bunch of industries across the private sector here in the county, especially our top employers, but also working with a lot of smaller employers as well. And this really feeds into all the different areas that we do and some of the initiatives in the programs that we have. So like I mentioned, business outreach and industry engagement is a focal point of our organization. And that entails a lot of one-on-one conversations and outreach to businesses across Champagne County. Now oftentimes, these businesses are structured as one-on-one visits or conversations and also within industries together. So we are lucky in that we do have quite a few regional clusters here across Champagne County, everything from manufacturing and logistics to transportation and defense. So that provides an opportunity to really address some needs of the business community in an aggregate form. So oftentimes, we're bringing together those industries to address current needs, oftentimes around workforce challenges, but also look to the future of what we can address together for different opportunities to take advantage of. One of the things that we talked about when we were here last year was this cluster report that we were working on in partnership with the University of Illinois Corporate Relations and Research Park. And I'm pleased to say that since that time, we've wrapped up that report and finalized its findings. So one of the suggestions in the report was to focus on three different areas and clusters here for our county, ag tech, med tech, and manufacturing. And it's important to note that we did look at six different sectors, but these three stood out as the greatest potential for us. And while we will focus on the others that we work in, these are some of the areas that will lead some of our efforts as far as funding opportunities, grants, and some of the additional initiatives that will continue to add to our organization. And we already have a platform in these different areas and different programs and events that we run. But it will be a focus of ours to really advance these different sectors. And, you know, one of the things that we always celebrate, because we typically present during the month of October to you, is that it's Manufacturing Month in Illinois, so we're busy celebrating our manufacturers. Here we are with APL Engineered Materials in Urbana, which is a really cool local CU success story started by a local professor and in the 50s. And here we are presenting the president with his State of Illinois proclamation. Stephanie also mentioned in the introduction that one of the things that we've been busy doing is acting as a community navigator. So we were awarded a grant from the state of Illinois in July that runs through this December as a hub and spoke model to really work across Champagne County and central Illinois with different spokes attached to our hub to make sure that businesses are aware of different funding opportunities that are available, but also really work with one-on-one outreach and technical assistance to make sure that they have the materials that they need and that they're able to apply for these programs. A lot of programs were rolled out last year that have been mentioned, like PPP and IDOL and different rounds. But there is still very much a critical need for some additional relief and some additional funding to small businesses. The portal did close last week for this particular program, the Back to Business Grant. So we're still looking through some of the data of what that all entails, but we do know of at least 230 Urbana businesses that have applied to the program. And nine have been approved and four have been announced to date. So that will be rolled out on a continual basis, probably through mid-November, and we're hopeful to see some additional Urbana businesses on that list. And we were happy to be able to host Governor Pritzker in town around the launch of this program to visit some downtown Urbana small businesses. One of the things that we're always focused on is bringing additional funding to Champagne County. So we're frequently looking at state and federal opportunities to support different areas of focus of ours and initiatives that would support and create jobs and retain jobs here in our area. One of the things that we focused on late last year and early into this year was working directly with Parkland College to submit a proposal to the state of Illinois for their funding opportunity for a program called the Manufacturing Training Academy. This was really geared towards the growing the manufacturing talent pipeline and creating hands-on training for specific skills that were needed to our community, both in a short-term credential setting, but also in a long-term degree setting as well. We submitted this earlier in the year, and while we were unfortunately not awarded the project at the time, it has led to many other things because a lot of work was done with our local manufacturers. One of those is we were able to roll this concept proposal into another grant that is actually due tomorrow with the EDA called the Build Back Better Challenge. And this is a central Illinois coalition representing five NSA areas and 21 counties overall that has four different areas of focus, but one of them is workforce development, and it centers around this opportunity to really bolster the manufacturing industry across central Illinois. But particularly, of course, we're focused on Champagne County. So we're hopeful that we'll be able to win those Phase One awards of $500,000 to be able to then go study these projects and then apply for Phase Two, which could be up to $75 million in funding. One of the other things that we were recently part of and excited to launch in coordination with the New American Welcome Center and many volunteers was the Champagne County Welcoming Plan. I had the opportunity to lead the economic integration and employment sector of this work over the past few years. And that was a really a lot of coordination with our local business community and also entrepreneurs in our community to really understand what some of the immigrants' needs are as they go into the workforce here, but also as they work to start their own businesses and become entrepreneurs themselves. So we were pleased to be able to release this and celebrate its launch, but really, we're just at the beginning of the work and look forward to being able to carry out some of these priority areas and also work to find funding to be able to support some of these initiatives that are going to be critical to success. As Stephanie also mentioned, we are the proud host of one of the Small Business Development Centers. So the Illinois network as a whole is a really strong network. There's about 40 centers across the state. And we host one here in our office. So looking at some of the metrics, these just represent the the center overall from January through December of 2020. We have two full-time staff members that are solely dedicated to the SBDC, one for general services and the other for international trade and helping companies with exporting and importing. These numbers are a little bit skewed as compared to different years because, of course, we were very highly focused on pandemic recovery and relief and helping businesses. So there's much higher numbers on traditional things that you see, like trading sessions and other areas, because we were so focused on making sure that as things were rolling out, and it was very confusing that we were presenting information on a timely, accurately basis to help businesses navigate and understand what opportunities were even available, what you should apply for, what you're eligible for, and making also sure that what else was really important was that everyone was doing it in the right order, because there was a lot of overlapping things launching at once. And 2020 was a very, just sort of confusing and challenging time to navigate all those funding opportunities. But as we look specific as kind of a painting, a picture of right now of Urbana-specific clients or SBDC, we have about 539 active clients that work with us out of the City of Urbana. And we do continue to see new clients added to our portfolio every year. So we have 56 thus far this calendar year. Out of that group, we helped secure over $1.4 million in grants or loans specific to the CARES Act. And that was to just 22 of those businesses. We're still working through some of that reporting as it's lagging. And businesses are still waiting to hear back on some of those grant opportunities. And then, of course, we work, do work directly with the City of Urbana's Economic Development Department on its own business development grant. So we've been helping in three of this year, but eight are currently under review. And I think, you know, to just pointing out some of the the programs that were previously in place, like the big program through the state of Illinois and a federal program of PPP. You know, we envision that there's going to be more relief coming from different areas. But, you know, one of the things that we're always working to do is just relay that information back to our state and our federal partners at DCEO and SBA too, because there's obviously still a really great need, and we're still in a pandemic. And there's still a lot of small businesses that are struggling and really need some additional assistance. Or there's businesses who unfortunately, just due to the timing, started out in early 2020 and have been ineligible for a lot of these opportunities. So we continue to advocate on their behalf. We also launched some new programs. So Dreamex CU, this was a partnership that we developed in partnership with Dreamex America Inc. That was really geared towards micro lending of loans between $1,000 and $15,000. But there was a special focus on immigrant refugee and first generation entrepreneurs. And we worked with the New American Welcome Center on this effort as well. So we are proud to have two Urbana businesses that have taken advantage of this program. One was completely funded, the Best of Africa's Food Store, and one is currently on the platform for funding to help grow organic skincare line. The other program that we launched was Export Tech, and this is with our International Trade Center. So this is an opportunity. We're the only program like this that exists in the state of Illinois. We took it over from a Chicago office last year. But this is solely dedicated to helping companies that export be able to grow and expand their sales. So we have quite a few local exporters in Champagne County and particularly in Urbana, and continue to see our number of export sales rise each year. So this was a program that we launched and we're in our second cohort right now. And it's usually quite an expensive program, but due to some CARES Act funding that we were able to secure, we're offering this at no cost to businesses. So some things of what's happening now and what's next and what our priority areas of focus are outside of our strategic plan is, you know, number one is recovery planning and implementation. And this is really around some of the different areas like workforce development and, you know, just embracing the different job opportunities and working with local regional partners, especially on the workforce development side, to make sure that we have the programs that are necessary and available based on the shifts that we've seen, not only across just general industries and, you know, whatnot, but also just the general shift that we're seeing across workers as well. And, you know, we're very much still seeing this in real time play out. So companies are still making decisions about spaces. Workers are still making decisions about what's best for their family or what they're required to do. And so we really want to make sure that we have options on the table for short-term careers, long-term careers. And we're working very closely with our partners to make that happen. And then another thing that I just wanted to mention, but I know Jane's going to dig into it here in a second, is, you know, talent has always been really important, but more so than ever, it's absolutely critical. And we've, we've been working to build our talent attraction programs over the years, and we're really excited about the Chambana Welcome Crew that we just launched. But it's going to be really important that we continue to work with our employers who are actively recruiting to make sure that they have the needs to be successful, the tools and the resources to be successful here in this community. And we want to build programs that complement what they're doing to make sure that we're attracting new residents here. So I know Jane is coming up right after me. I think I'll hand it off to her and then happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Carly. And I'll get my screen shared here. Okay. I'm hoping that everyone can see the screen, or are we in the same position that we need to look at the settings? Let me go.
Kind of the same as before, where we can see your list on the side.
I know. Looks like it's coming. So as it is loading, as it is doing here on my screen, at least I'm showing, I hope that it shows there in a second. Are you seeing anything on the screen? Not yet. Okay. Ah, there we go. Okay. So my name is Jane Deluce. Stephanie introduced us. I am President and CEO of Visit Champagne County. And I'm really just glad to see all of you this evening. I know many of you are new on the city council, and I look forward to the opportunity to get to know you better. I've been in this position for 12 years and seen a lot of changes in our community over the time. And I think the pandemic has been something that has really shown what change can do, but also what a community can do in terms of supporting our efforts. So when we, pre-pandemic, we introduced Destination 2023. And as you can see, their destination vision, you can see that our organizational vision, and I'm focusing on our organizational mission, which is that we promote a welcoming destination experience for visitors to strengthen economic opportunity and enhance the lives of residents. And I, we, I want to make sure I put that in there because really what we feel that the work that we do at the end of the day is for the residents of Urbana and for our entire Champagne County area. We do break it down into three areas, destination marketing, destination sales, and destination development. So here were the good old days. This was pre-pandemic. And at the time, we hit record numbers. So if you look here, you can see that travel and tourism supported 3,270 jobs in the greater Champagne County area, generating a total payroll of $91 million. This was from non-residential spending, which exceeded $448.7 million, adding $8.2 million in local taxes to our community. This data is provided by the U.S. Travel Association. And as you can see at the bottom of the slide, we do represent not only Champagne County, but Douglas, Multri, and Piast counties as part of the greater Champagne County area. Then travel stopped. And at that time, we were trying to figure out how we could help our businesses. This was mentioned by Steph and also by the mayor. What we decided to do, we were having our annual toast to tourism. And it started out with about $5,000 that was going to be given to hospitality heroes, people that worked in our hospitality businesses. So we worked alongside these from donations that ranged everywhere from the Champagne County United Way, as well as the Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and individual donations and raised over $33,000. That went towards 136 hospitality heroes impacted at 53 businesses. You can see on the screen all of the businesses in Urbana that did receive funding. These, I have to say, from all the work that I've done, this was the most heartwarming because these nominations came from the managers of those businesses or the owners. And they were heartbreaking to see what people went through. So we felt like if there was anything that we could do during this time to be able to give back to the people who had basically had their worlds rocked upside down, that we were able to do this. And so the Hospitality Relief Fund is something that we felt very strongly about and worked on that all during that time. As mentioned, Restaurant Week, Restaurant Week is a great way that we offer and and promote our restaurants. You can see during 2021, these were, we had 27 participating restaurants. We had over 30,000 website visits during the promotions. You can see the different Urbana businesses that are listed there with Algaradas and Poor Boys and Red Herring and Stango, Taste of Both Worlds. There, the, if you note, and I wanted to mention that Courier and Silver Creek, Crane Alley, and The Bread Company weren't open at the time, so they are usually a part of this. We shifted gears and made this a takeout edition, and it was a great way to be able to have people support our restaurants, but if they weren't comfortable with going to those restaurants, be able to pick it up and bring it home. And we included a testimonial here from Linda Dancing Dog Eatery that basically was thanking us for putting on Restaurant Week and giving her media spotlight that was on W A N D. And she said, hey, even if you didn't have anything to do with the spot, I can tell that Restaurant Week is helping our visibility. So thank you. And I think it's very important to look at is what we look at doing, again, while it is targeted towards visitors. And when you hear Visit Champagne County, you think, oh, it's only about bringing in visitors. We really think it is about our residents and making our residents feel like this is a great place to live, a great place to work, and of course, a great place to visit. During the pandemic and then also just this past year, so we've had AJGA, the American Junior Golf Association, for two years. And this was an event that was able to happen at the Urbana Country Club. You can see that You can see the picture there, the mayor, she did a great job being able to kick off our golfers. The gentlemen that are in this this particular photo were part of the pre-EM that we had on the first day. That was a way to involve local community leaders, including Darius White from the city of Urbana, and being able to be part of it. They stayed at the Hampton in Urbana and the economic impact of $247,000 for that event. And the reason I wanted to say what the economic impact is, we also paid to bring that event here. So we have a $10,000 investment that is a bid incentive for AJGA. And in return, you can see the return on investment is the economic impact of over $247,000. So in addition to AJGA, there are many other types of events that we do, whether they're sports, whether they are meetings and conferences, which basically did not happen during the pandemic, but are happening now. And so we have a sales team that works with meeting planners, sport planners, group planners, group tour planners, student groups, to bring them in and bring their business here. Because when they come here, these businesses, these golfers in this photo and any other group that we bring in, they stay at our hotels, they eat in our restaurants, they shop, they fill out their cards with gas. That is truly an economic impact for our area and helps out all of our businesses that are in the area during this time. Another thing in terms of what we're looking forward to, people are excited that we're bringing back the IHSA State Boys Basketball Tournament. It did not happen in 2021, but it is going to happen in 2022. So we are in the first of an initial three-year contract. If, for those of you who did not grow up in this area, it was hosted here for 77 years. And then it went to Peoria for 25 years. And now this will be the first time it's been back here and we anticipate that it will stay here forever. So it's an initial three-year contract. It is all four classes of basketball that will happen at the State Farm Center in March of 2022. And is truly an economic impact of over $4 million per year. This is thousands of fans that will be here. They'll have everything together during that time. We will also have wheelchair basketball during that time, the Unified Basketball Tournament. It is a great opportunity to showcase basketball in this area while also truly being something that the residents can enjoy as well as visitors from all over that will that will come to this area. A second one that has happened, this is the fourth time that we have hosted the Hot Rod Power Tour. Personally, I don't know a lot about cars and hot rods, but I will say that people who have love of their cars are are just travel from all over. This has people that came in from all over the country. And it is a normally a seven-day, seven-city tour that happens. But during this year in August, it was a five-day, five-city tour. We were the last day. We had over 2,500 hot rodders that were here, free admission to the public to come out, an estimate impact of $810,000. Because we were the last stop, we anticipate hosting it again next summer in 2022 to kick off next year's tour. So it's truly exciting to be able to bring back this event. And the reason they don't return to cities all the time, the reason they keep coming back to our community is because of the great experience that they have here and they want to be here. And they, we try to work it out because they take, they go through all of states, north and southeast and west, et cetera. The other one, the last one on this side that I wanted to bring up was the Upper Midwest Convention Visitor Bureau Conference. So we are ready for our our community to shine when we host from seven states, almost 200 attendees that will come. And we are going to have their conference here in September of 2022. We bid on this event and we're going to bring them here. And we think it's a great way to showcase our community and to be able to brag a little bit to our fellow convention visitor bureaus from all of these different states. During the time, as was mentioned, when during the pandemic, the Experience Guide was printed digitally. So now finally, yay, we get to have a printed guide. So we have 40,000 copies that are distributed. They're distributed at businesses, a lot through the University of Illinois with orientations. There, we get them by request, people come by, they pick them up at any of the welcome centers, out at the mall, Marketplace Mall, at the airport, at the train station, or our office. We also mail them to people. This is, and they're also at the rest stops, at all of the rest stops around Illinois. So this, the Experience Guide, and we changed the name from Visitors Guide because it's really an opportunity to share stories about our areas for people to look and say, I'm interested in the arts. I'm interested in ag, I'm interested in sports. And they're all broken down in those areas. We have guest editors and hopefully get a chance to be able to see the Experience Guide. We also have a new map that was illustrated by local artist David Michael Moore. This is brand new. This is a tear-off map that's used at the hotels. It's also used at different places around the area. And it's a great way for people that even though they have their phones, oftentimes, especially like in a hotel, it's easier to explain to somebody places that they can go visit during this time. We also joined the TikTok craze. And I don't know a lot about TikToks, so I would turn that over to our marketing team in terms of Honey Bunny Bake Cake jars. You can see some of the ones we did here. They're at Meadowbrook, also the Little Red Hut, and of course, the Japan House. So we joined in April of 2021. We gained, this is 210 followers, we're at 1,100 likes on our videos to date. We're learning what people want to see on TikTok, but it's a great way to reach a part of the population and have people respond and engage with us, both residents and visitors. We're also having a new campaign right now, which is entitled Your Places, Your Spaces, Our Community. And we want this, and I love this line, we want to learn about the places that bring our residents joy. So we're asking for people to submit their photos of favorite places in the area. We will select up to eight winners to be featured in future marketing materials. We'll also offer professional photo shoot for all of those winners in their favorite local place that they like to go. So super excited about that campaign and great to see what people think and where they want to tag us and be able to be involved. Also, as mentioned with the groundbreaking of the hotels, so when we work with all of the hotels in the greater Champaign County area, those are included on our website in our Experience Guide and they're included in our sales leads. If you remember, I mentioned the idea if they're working with a sport planner or a meeting planner, that way we we send out those leads to those hotels and they're able to respond to say, yes, we can accommodate that group or we don't have the space for them, whether it's a conference that's going to be there or whether it's going to be a group tour coming in of some sort. We did just recently tour Gather and great to see that opportunity there. So they'll be included. And then, of course, as well as a Hotel Royale, as it gets built as well too. So excited about that in terms of our Destination Development projects, to see those coming online. And also then I think the the most important thing that we're working on, and this is an initiative of our foundation. And we are working with a community group of about 30 people to start. And it is the Champaign County African American Heritage Trail. You can see that the mission there is to educate today's residents and visitors about this history of people whose stories have been largely unrecognized, but directly shaped this place that we call home. We want to inspire conversation, expand understanding, and contribute to a better society. So we will officially announce this trail on November 17. And we look forward to this, think of this as in terms of an immersive experience. If you've gone to other communities where there has been heritage trails, it is an opportunity to, whether it's existing buildings or it's going to be markers where buildings may be, a lot of it will live online. A lot of it may be shown in murals or public art. And this will be something that is Champaign County-wide and we we look forward to this. There's been a lot of history out there, but there's not a lot of it documented. And we're finding that even had I grown up in in this area, this, these stories wouldn't have been told. I wouldn't have known these stories. And we feel it's very important to tell them. And so a big part of our effort will be education. And we're working with the schools so that this will be part of curriculum in the Urbana schools, Champaign schools, Rantoul schools in particular, and potentially the smaller schools in outside the county area. So truly excited about that project. And again, we'll be announcing it on November 17. Our goal would be to have most of it complete by next June. But it will be something that will continue on. And our foundation is making, facilitating that, but it's being led by two amazing co-chairs, Angela Rivers and Barbara Suggs-Mason, along with a community committee. And we'll continue to grow the people that are involved with it and have that opportunity should they want to be involved. I always like to include this is our team and our board. We have a lot of different people from governmental areas. You see Bridget up there in the top row. We love having Bridget on the board. We work both, this is our board, our foundation board, and our team. So it seems like a lot of people, but it's, we're really, we kind of say we're small but mighty in terms of the work that we're able to do. But I feel honored to be able to work alongside these people to be able to have this, carry out the ways that we do in terms of promoting this destination. And speaking of working alongside people, this is where Carly and I are going to tag team. So as the mayor alluded to, and I like that screenshot of her there when she was in a video, Champaign County Safe was created by a cooperative effort between the EDC, VCC, the university, the cities. Everybody came together and we set the model about how communities should work together. So the the website even had over 38,000 views with that, with all the, over 23,000 visitors that came to 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 visit that. There was signage, there was videos, there was posters, there was blogs. But the key part of this, and over 60 pieces created, and I gotta, I gotta give a shout out here to Terry Reesbeck, who's our VP of Marketing. She and Carly did all the heavy lifting on this. And so I really appreciate the effort that those two worked collectively together. But it was truly a community effort. And I think working through all of the messaging so that it was consistent messaging around the entire county and being on the weekly calls and the bi-weekly calls and a variety of webinars, workshops that happen, and tons and tons of materials so that when you went into the businesses or you had the posters that were outside the businesses, it was all a consistent message across the board. And to be able to partner also with the University of Illinois with the efforts that they did, I think it was truly exciting to see. But VCC and EDC worked very hard on this effort together. So it was definitely a collaborative effort. And then the second one that Carly talked about.
Carly? Yes, thanks, Jane. So as I mentioned before, you know, talent development is, our talent attraction is really important now, more so than ever. And over the years, our organizations have been working more closely together in this area to build programs in coordination with our local employers to make sure that they're successful in their own recruiting efforts. So, you know, over the past years, we've developed things like the Champaign County Recruiters Network, which has over 100 local recruiters working at small and large companies across the county. We've done community tours where we put the recruiters on an MTD bus and take them around and and help show the brag points and how to sell the community as if we were selling to recruits or new and potential residents. But after a few years of looking at what other communities had done successfully and benchmarking and really taking a look and hearing from employers, we built the Chambana Welcome Crew. And we were really excited to launch it this August, just a few months ago. So this is a new community ambassador program and it's geared towards new and potential residents. So anytime that somebody is considering our area or they've just recently moved here, they can go online to a website to get matched with somebody. And this is really important for a lot of reasons. But one of the things that we were hearing and we see just in some of the trends is that oftentimes, a lot of the introduction or orientation or onboarding processes that happen when you're a new employee here are very work-related and, you know, work-specific, right, which is, which is natural. But we know that one of the things that ties people to a community and makes them feel welcome right out of the gate is that they get connected on a personal level for their own interests. Whether that's things that they're interested in, like outdoor activities, whether that's religious opportunities. So there's a lot, you know, to be explored and considered. And we just want to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward right out of the gate so that we can work to retain that talent here in our community and even potentially attract the talent when they're considering multiple communities at once and they see a program like this. You know, we think this will be really helpful in helping them choose us as a location. So these are some of the ambassadors that we launched with in August. But we've had a great response thus far and we're onboarding many new ambassadors now, actually. So you'll see some new faces up on the website this week. And we'll continue to do so on a rolling basis. So we're really excited about the potential that this program has. And like I mentioned earlier, it's really meant to be a compliment to things that our local employers are doing and not replace anything. So we're going to keep building from from this particular program and we're excited to see what's next.
Okay, so we will stop the screen share. Thank you. I think both of us want to thank you for that. And Steph, we'll turn it back to you in regard to wrapping up our presentation. Thank you for listening to a lot of information being shared with you. And we'll continue to send you information either by email and in print as well too.
And we're glad to answer any questions you have about the proposals or about any of the programs that everyone is working on.
Any questions for our presenters? Mary Alice?
Thank you, Carly and Jane, for coming. And it's always very interesting to hear what's going on in your two organizations. I apologize if I haven't seen, I haven't checked my email today from the city. If you could email us those presentations, that would be great. There's always a lot of numbers and I'd rather pay attention to what you guys are telling me rather than scrolling down numbers. So that would be really helpful. As, as I went through and reviewed the, the actual agreements, one thing that struck me that I don't remember seeing before, but in the EDC's obligations to the city, there's a section called the EDC Work Plan, which says, "EDC shall develop a work plan for each city for each fiscal year." And I don't recall seeing that in the past. Is that, I didn't see it in the, in the information that was given to us? Is that something that is available for us to look over, at least the past ones? Because I think it's due in June.
Yes, and we're actually, we're a little bit delayed in our one for our current fiscal year. So that is something that I still owe you guys, but we're working with the board to develop and it should be completed next month. But I can send out past ones as well for reference.
That would be wonderful.
And we'll send the slides too.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Grace?
Thank you. Thank you to our presenters and the work that you all are doing at EDC and VCC. I appreciate, especially appreciate the focus on minority or women-owned businesses and African American Heritage Trail. And I was wondering for both your organizations, how businesses connect with y'all for assistance or partnership? Like just your contact on the website or what's the best way for any other organizations to connect with you?
Yes, if there's anybody interested in working with us on any of the things that we mentioned today or if they dig into some additional details, the best thing is just probably reach out to me or Jane and then we'll point you in the right direction on our team. Some of the things that we mentioned, we lead out of our office, but other things are sometimes partnerships. But regardless, we'll get everyone pointed in the right direction.
I'll also add too, we do like a monthly email that goes to businesses that sign up to show them the upcoming events that are happening so that people are aware in terms of increased traffic. And it's a great way for businesses so that if they're not, if they figure out like, why are they slammed and didn't realize that something was happening? Plus, just to have an acknowledgement about people that are going to be in the community. So I encourage our businesses to be able to sign up for that. And we have that as well. And I can, Grace, I could send that as as part of that information of where they could sign up to receive that email.
Thank you. Terese?
Yeah. Thank you, Jane, for your, for your presentation. And I've talked to you a couple of times regarding the African American Heritage Trail. And I'm so glad that you got Dr. Barbara Suggs-Mason to sign on to that because I definitely wasn't able. But also, I just wanted to give a little bit of history because it was mentioned about the, the basketball tournaments and what, how that affects the, the economy of Champaign and Urbana. I grew up watching those tournaments on, when we just had three stations. And they were always televised. But the other thing is that as I, as I grew, as I got older, it was a huge deal. And for those of you that do not know, it was always a huge deal in high schools all over Illinois to go downstate or to go upstate to the tournaments, which were held here in Champaign, Urbana, at the then-called the Assembly Hall. It, it offers an opportunity for many different people, from many different backgrounds, from many different... many different small towns, big towns, huge towns, to be all in that area at the same time. And you, it's, it's like any other kind of, of state gathering, especially at that age during, when you're in high school, where you make friends, you can make friends across the board, you can get to know people from all over and all over the state of Illinois. So I really do appreciate the, the, the effort that you all put into making some type of advertisement or to, to the way that you promote that particular, because us getting, get even getting those, those tournaments back, for me, it was a big deal. I was so, I was devastated when I found out that, that it was no longer at the Assembly Hall because it is just, well, State Farm, whatever it's called now. So thank you for the, your work that you do in bringing that, that particularly huge economic boost in, in promoting that. Also, I think that our getting more hotels in Urbana will also be, will definitely help. And thank, thank you for, for doing what you, what you've done to, to keep our hotel businesses going. I really, I really, that's what I, that's what shot out at me. Thank you.
Grace?
Okay. Yeah, thanks, thanks for the presentation. And like Charisse, I grew up with the high school tournament too. And it was a real heartbreak when we lost it. And I know a lot of people will be glad that it's back. I remember, you know, skipping high school to go to those games at the Assembly Hall. But um, Jane, I had a question and I don't know, you don't have to have the answer, but you mentioned in your presentation that non-residential people spend over $400 million in our county, is that correct?
Yes, pre-pandemic, yeah.
Pre-pandemic, right. In a, in a normal year, could you tell us maybe how much total retail spending for both residents and non-residents are in Champaign County? Do you happen to know that number?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I'd be happy to research that. What they, what the numbers that we get, it is a combination of hotel, retail, restaurant, and it's, they do it broken down by state and then the state breaks it down by county. So I'm happy to, to share that information with you. The last study that we got was in, well, 2019 for the 2018 number. So yeah, I'm happy to, to share that. I don't have that off the top of my head with the total.
That's okay, but it's mostly for the hospitality industry though?
Correct. These numbers would be specific to the, to visitor spending. So when you think of visitor spending from hotels, retail, gas, you know, attractions, but for the most part it's hotel and food and beverage because those are the most easily tracked.
Grace?
Thanks. I was wondering if there is an overall report of the economic impacts the past year from either organization, particularly Visit Champaign County, because it sounds like you had a lot of great numbers and reports on some of the events. I didn't know if there was an overall report. And I understand that some of the things are a little less tangible, so I appreciate that. But I didn't know if there was, if you had data on monetary impacts or like site visits or searches relating to Urbana or anything else like that, that you would or could provide?
Absolutely. We do, we have an end report that I have, we shared electronically, but I also can send, because sometimes it's easier to look at the print copy, so I'm happy to send those as well. And that was done for fiscal year 21. The economic impact numbers provided to the state, the ones that had the big, the big amount of dollars, we have not received those yet for this last year. It will be very interesting to see what those were, but I'm happy to share the end report. And then we also share hotel occupancy, the types of site visits that we do, the events that have been secured in a quarterly report as well too. And those are sent every quarter and they're also accessible on our website. And I'm happy to share that link as well to, so that you can look at from this past quarter to any of the quarters. All of that is, is included in those reports.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Grace?
More, there's no one else in the queue for now. Some of these other questions are more for Urbana staff. I was wondering where this money increase is coming from? The combined 20,000 increase, is that already a section of the budget or where is that coming from? You're muted.
We have that money in this, it was approved in this year's budget. And some of that was kind of carryover when UBA was not funded last year and not funded this year. So that's where we had extra funding that could go to support these additional efforts at EDC and VCC.
And from the UBA's at the Urbana Business Association?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I was also wondering about our city economic development department and kind of the relationship with these organizations there and our kind of website and annual reporting for that?
You mean our website and reporting what EDC and VCC are working on or what?
For the city economic development, like I'm looking on the website and I see a 2016 Economic Development Activity Report, but I don't see anything since then. I didn't know if we were kind of relying on partnering with these organizations. And if so, if we could like include their reports on our city page so that we have something there or like what that relationship is with our own city economic development in these partner organizations?
Yeah, we can definitely include their reports on our website. And I can, if you want an annual report from me, that's something I can definitely work on for you.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be helpful and, you know, to post online if we have other years, it would be helpful to have an updated one.
Okay, thanks for noticing that.
Yeah, thank you. And then my last comment or thought would also, I'd like to see us considering contributing directly to black owned businesses that work in the same field like By Black Chambana or others, so that we can, you know, kind of practice what we preach in a sense and support lots of diverse organizations. And remember that there are quite a few organizations that work in this field of promoting and supporting businesses that it seems work in some sort of relationship with these. And so I'd encourage us to look at directly supporting some of those businesses as well.
Okay. Any other questions or do we have a motion?
I can make a motion. I'll move that we move resolution number 2021-10044R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution, a community partnership agreement between Champaign County Economic Development Corporation for Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
The second.
Moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Charisse. Can we, can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now we need a motion for the second one, or resolution rather.
I move to recommend to resolution number 2021-10-045R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement, Visit Champaign County, FY 2021 to 2022, to City Council.
Second.
So moved by Shandra and was that Chrissy seconded? Yes. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Quizzenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you again for the presentations. Next, we have ordinance number 2021-09-44, ordinance revising the FY 22 and 2022 Annual Budget, Budget Amendment Number Three. And this is also going to include the conversation or discussion around the automatic license plate readers. I think Chief, is it over to you?
Yes. Yes, you can. I'll get us started. Good evening, Council, Mayor, citizens. Tonight, we'll continue our discussion, the next step regarding license plate readers, LPRs, automatic license plate recognition systems. I'm going to call them LPRs tonight. What we're going to do tonight, Deputy Chief Searls and I will cover essentially three items to facilitate some discussion and hopefully answer some of the questions that have been brought up. I've received emails and some of the feedback as we've been moving through this process. So we'll, we'll go over the, the policy. We will go over some of the location considerations. We'll go over a, a, a few of the stats. So hopefully we'll be able to paint a little clearer picture for you. I want to start however tonight with telling you what this is not. This is not a magic pill. This is not going to make all gun violence go away. I don't think that, at least I've ever presented it as such. It's not a surveillance camera system that can pan, tilt and zoom. It's not a red light camera. It's not speed enforcement. I say this because this is a lot of what, some of the things that have worked their way back to me. What this is, is a tool and it's an investigative tool. And hopefully the, the value you'll see as we go through this. One other thing before I get started on the policy, I wanted to mention that I, I, there was during some of the public input, there was some discussion about this being a top-down led initiative. That also is not the case. While I was aware of what these were, this initiative, this idea was born and brought forward by Linda Turnbull and Charisse Hurstsey. And through some conversations, through other city staff with Rain Tools' experience, the police were then brought in later on down the line. So I, it's sometimes things get characterized as the police are pushing for this, the police are pushing for that. And we recognize it as a valuable tool. But I just wanted to say, make a few of those remarks here, here in the beginning. What we'll do next is go through some of the policy considerations. I think everyone got the, the policy and I am now going to do my darnedest to try to share screen for those following along at home here. Okay. Good, participants can now see my application. All right, so this is a draft policy. One of the things that I learned is that there are quite a few policies that exist on this. And I read examples from California to Texas, from Champaign, Terrain Tool, the International Association of Chiefs of Police has a model policy and a white paper as well. And so this kind of combining all of these are starting point. This is, this is our starting point. I'm not here to say that, oh, this is all done and it has to be this. We're willing to take some feedback. I know that, like I said, I've gotten some input from, from council on this. So what I'm going to do is kind of scroll through some of this. Deputy Chief Searls will hit the next couple of points and, and then we'll go ahead and do our best to answer questions. So in here, I, I wanted to spend a few minutes with regards to some of the definitions. I think the purpose statement is pretty succinct. Some are rather long out there on the internet, but we tried to be very focused and, and short with that. One of the things I wanted to do though was part of the definitions. And if you see some of the, the language and you've, everybody Googles policies now and can read certain things, you'll, you'll see a lot of repetitive sort of text within them. But one of the things that, that we tried to do here, when we go down to definitions, you'll see there's an alert versus a hit. And the hit is sort of the matching of, of, of the, of the license plate data to a, the, the listings of materials, whether it's leads, NCIC or a local hot list. And the alert is simply that sort of notice that comes out. Right now it's, while we don't have this, but our best understanding of all the processes that it actually would be an application that would be loaded onto the mobile data computers and squad cars. But the, the alert is simply the notice, the hit is the, is the match. The next thing is I scrolled down here, I wanted to point out the authorized user versus an authorized reader. Some of the concern early on that we'd heard was that there would be, everyone in the department would be able to do everything with the system. It's not the case. We've tried to narrow the focus of who would actually be an authorized user and then who just reads the material or gets an alert. And so we've tried to, everyone would be an authorized reader per se, but only certain people would be authorized users and would have, whether they would be supervisors, the detectives who work on our most important cases and the, and the system administrator. There was one question, I don't know that we have fully landed on exactly who the system administrator would be. We have discussed being sworn, sworn person whether or civilian staff member here. And it's essentially right now, it's still, it's still a work in progress for us. So I just wanted to mention that. I know that's come up as well. As we scroll down through the list a little bit, you would, you will see, and, and I'm sort of assuming that everybody here on council at least has been a part of all these discussions. So I won't start exactly from ground zero, but you will see the, the hot list and then the hit definitions here. And hopefully those are at the top of your screens. The, the, the local hot list is the, the information that we would actually put into, into the system. So if we had an armed robbery at a gas station and developed license plate, we could put that in this particular system, that'd be the local hot list. In addition to that, there's the NCIC database and the leads database. One is national, one is local. And that's where the amber alerts or the silver alerts sort of reside. So that's at least, that's where those would come to, that's where those, those plates would reside. I wanted to, the other thing I wanted to mention here again, just to make sure that this is clear, is while we can take multiple steps to actually check the license plate or run a license plate, the system itself doesn't access Secretary of State data. The system, again, I'll say that it doesn't, it doesn't access this. Can we do that? Absolutely. Just like the officers now can run a license plate on, on a, on a traffic stop. But automatically the system does not do that. And then I also wanted to mention the query. One of the things that we can do is when they, when the officer, we want to make a query so we could look and see, did, did a particular license plate that we developed as a suspect in my armed robbery, did it drive through a particular location? Do we, if, can we look that particular bit up? The other thing that we could do is if we didn't have a license plate, we could at least say, hey, there was an armed robbery at this gas station and we believe the suspect vehicle was white, it went this particular direction. Are there any white cars in this 30 minute time span? So there's a couple of different ways to, to, to make, make some of those queries. As, again, as I've, as I've said again, this is a draft. And one of the things I even looked at when I noticed this here in section paragraph B, all sworn officers may receive Hitler's on their mobile data terminals. It should actually say all sworn officers and front desk staff of the PSRs, as they're referred to earlier. So that's something that we have to, we have to get changed. And right there in section A, you'll also see the only the authorized users. And again, if I scroll back up, the authorized users were the supervisors, the detectives and the system administrator. I won't again necessarily read all, go through each one of these. I, I get the feeling that everybody has had some chance to look at it. I will jump down to G here, which is the, the audit requirement. I will jump down to G here, which is the audit requirement. And again, we could make, we would be able to audit entries. We could audit the queries to make sure that they were, was there a corresponding case that matched and whatnot. We've read different examples. Some only do it annually. I feel that we probably need to do more than that. So at least biannually, we could do some, we could do audits. Again, that's part of the discussion here as we kind of move through this. So I wanted to at least point that out as well. So again, there's this, the installation and equipment, again, all belongs. Is, so we rent this, and again, we would assign a system administrator. That is, that has not yet been decided. I do want to point out 431.5, paragraph C. Because there seems, I want to make sure, we've heard several anecdotal stories tonight regarding this horrific event that happened and the kids were taken out of the car. Or that horrific event happened. There is a visual confirmation process that needs to happen. So just because a car is, is a, there's a hit on a particular vehicle, and their notice goes up that says, hey, this stolen car just drove through this particular area, the officers would be noticed of that event. Currently, right now, Flock Safety is claiming 93% accuracy. So there seemed to be some other numbers kind of all over. I'm just gonna tell you what we've been, what we've been told. But before the officers take any sort of action, they have to verify that. First of all, they want to visually confirm that indeed that is the right plate, number is correct, the state is correct. If there's any specialized classification, because you can get license plates with all sorts of different themes now in our state and others, and whether there's a Fighting Illini plate or a Chicago Cubs plate or whatever. We want to make sure the officers have to verify that what has been reported to them is exactly what they see in front of them. And then if it's a, if it's in the local hot list, that would be a list that's contained within the system. If it's one that's a pass-through to the leads of the NCIC, then we want them to check that, make sure that query is correct as well. So I wanted to point that, at least the particular component of the policy out. Again, a lot of this has to do with some of the actual procedures and what officers would do. And if they would, you know, there's a requirement for some sort of written documentation if they were to make any kind of stop based on this. And so I think that's in F, whether it's a field interview card or a warning, a citation, a police report, depending on the extent of the encounter. Again, in G, you will see that only that the requirement supervisors, detectives, and the administrator are authorized to enter. Again, everyone would sort of get the chime on their MDC. And that's the point of this, that we want that. But as far as to do a deeper dive, we're requiring a higher, a different level of access. And again, the, at the beginning of each of the shifts, we'll make sure that the hot list is correct, for at least for our local, our local one. I can't say exactly right now how many would be in there in our local hot list. If someone wants to ask that, I don't know that I have a good answer for you. But that is something that would be, we'd have to monitor. The other piece of this down here, we had to do with some deployment, and Deputy Chief Searls will speak to that in just a minute here. And there was a question about, I think toward the end, we talked about different factors, and we didn't do a very good job of listing some out. So there are things like whether it's, you know, crime, some of the crime data or road layout, depending, or is there, well, we can't put one here because there's two big trees that block or something. Are there other natural obstructions? So there's a variety of different things that we would have to use to discuss some of the specific deployment locations, and we'll get into just that in just a second. I, the other, the other thing that I think is really important here is we've looked, and sometimes we've heard, I've read about different stories where departments kept data for five years or ridiculously long periods of time. We don't want to do that here. And right now, 30 days, as we've talked to some of our other local partners, seem to be a reasonable amount of time. So on day 31, day 31, the data falls off as the new day comes on. And so that is, that's our recommendation at this point. And then toward the end, you will see then some of the training. We would have to, we're learning too. So am I. And so is sort of others sort of involved in this project. So there would be some ongoing training, and I believe right now we've called for an annual training. So I just wanted to kind of scroll through that, give some of the highlights. I'm gonna check a quick, I think we've killed, I think I've hit several of the things that we got questions on. We're clearly gonna have some more discussion. And again, one of the things I do, I should say at this point, and I don't know, there's some discussion about what would, what would be the threshold for us to put something into our local hot list, not necessarily leads, stolen cars going to leads or whatnot. What would we do? What's our local hot list? And so we've had some discussions. I know one of the local policies talks about not doing any registration violations nor city ordinance violations. Makes total sense to me. There was some discussion about whether we do misdemeanors or felonies, but there might be misdemeanors where we think something needs to be in. Domestic battery in the state of Illinois is a misdemeanor. Maybe that's one we would need to do if it's a, so I think there's room for some discussion on that. A couple of other things I'll mention here, and again, I guess we can have some further talk as we go through this. Sharing of the data. And as best, as best we, as I'm learning about this in some of our discussions, I believe that data has to at least be shared regionally, because that is, I think, important. But how do we do that? I don't know just yet. So for instance, I think when Champaign, and as they're, they're moving, at least in this direction as well, the county, U of I, as we share, are part of this sort of, sort of network. What are the levels? And I don't, and I don't know that I fully have all the nuances of that now. I will tell you that that's part of the value of this. We can, for instance, if Decatur were to need something, they could even call over and query and say, hey, we're looking for a white car in this particular area that was involved in a murder over here. Did it, is there something similar that landed in Urbana? We think the suspect lives over in this area. So that can say, I can try to picture a variety of different ways that we could, we can make some queries. But those would all have to come in and, again, go through an authorized user. So I think there's just a little more for us to continue to learn about this. You know, we can, we should be able to, the way I understand it, is generate reports based on these things to at least give some success rates or some not-success rates. I think a couple of the details that we've looked at, that I was able to look at, fortunately, only like a half a percent of cars have hits. It's because most citizens are going about their business and their debt is there, and it falls off. So we don't have, it's not like there's thousands and thousands of hits that we would expect to find. So I am going to stop for a moment, as I see we're 20 minutes into our time here. And Deputy Chief Searls will go over a little bit more with regards to some of the location considerations and then some of the statistics.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Let me share my screen real quick. So I was asked to do a couple of things in preparing for this meeting. One of the first things I was asked to do was get some information about statistics related to license plate readers. Flock Safety provided some information from a couple of different jurisdictions. Marietta, Georgia, Cobb County, Georgia, San Marino, California, Dayton, Ohio, Shelby County, Tennessee, some places in Texas. So I picked up the phone and I called several of these places. I've got, I've got calls into another three jurisdictions, but I spoke with a couple people. One of them was a lieutenant from the Cobb County, Georgia Police Department. We talked for probably 30 or 45 minutes about this, and I said, hey, Flock is touting some reductions in crime. And he said, yeah, so in a trial period, a six-month trial period, there were various reductions of crime in one particular precinct. And if you're not familiar with Cobb County, Georgia, it's suburban Atlanta. Their jurisdiction has about 850,000 people there. So during the six-month period, there was a 52% reduction in robberies, a 21% reduction in residential burglaries, a 64% reduction in vehicle burglaries, and a 13% reduction in vehicle theft. And one of the things that he said that sort of struck me along the way was that currently, they have, on average, at least one significant LPR incident every day in the Cobb County, Georgia jurisdiction. I thought that was noteworthy. So I included that quote from the lieutenant. The next place I spoke with somebody from was the Joliet Police Department. I spoke with a detective there. I got the distinct impression, he and I had chatted for probably about 45 minutes. I got the distinct impression there, he's sort of the tech detective, all things technology flow through him. And he told me story after story after story about license plate readers. And I asked him, I said, you know, how significant are license plate readers to you? And he actually brought these statistics up to me that in 2020, there were five murders, and license plate readers were primarily due to solving three of those murders. And then 2021, two of four murders involved significant help from license plate readers. He then went on to tell me a pretty long story about a serial armed robber, where they kind of had to put some pieces together using information from license plate readers. And he said that they were able to sort of determine the suspect, put that information in their local hot list. The vehicle went by, license plate reader, the hit was sent out. Patrol officers attempted to stop the vehicle. There was a car chase, a foot chase, and all sorts of different things. And as a result of that stop, they actually connected the offender from this particular set of armed robberies in Joliet to an unsolved armed robbery murder in Tennessee. They actually called this particular place in Tennessee and said, do you have a murder of, I think it was a gas station? Do you have a, do you have an unsolved murder in a gas station? They said, yeah. And they had, apparently had a photograph of the suspect, and it matched Joliet's arrestee. So this detective gave me two quotes that I thought were interesting. And the first is, he said that this is one of the best technologies that he has ever used. And he was speaking sort of generally about license plate readers, not specifically about Flock. And then I posed a question to him. So let's say someone were to take these license plate readers away from the Joliet Police Department. How, what do you think? How would you feel? And he said that if he now had to do it without license plate readers, it would be like fighting crime with one hand tied behind his back. So I thought those were a couple of interesting sort of case studies from a couple of different places. Like I said, Flock Safety provided a bunch of statistics from several different places. Given the fact that I haven't spoken with them, and I'm sort of playing phone tag with them, with these people, I won't, I won't share those with you. But they'll, they'll include substantial reductions in various crime metrics from each of those jurisdictions. With respect to local locals, the local situation, I asked Melissa Hendrian for some information. I can't take credit for any of these graphics. She had these literally off on hand, and so she shared them with me. So the first thing that we're gonna look at here is some heat maps related to confirmed shots fired calls in the city of Urbana. So the red that you see in various places show a density of shots fired calls. And this data is July of 2020 through July of 21. What I have done is I have placed a star at the scene of our eight homicides that we've had in the city of Urbana year-to-date, along with 100 Block, just to sort of give you an idea of where these shootings and these homicides are occurring. As you can see, there's a couple of places where we have a bit of a cluster, northwest Urbana and southeast Urbana. This is a slightly different representation of some of the same information. And this is, this is a density that's really broken down to the 100 Block. And as you can see, we have four locations in the city of Urbana where we've had three or more shootings in the same 100 Block. The next thing I asked Melissa for was not just shootings, but violent crime. And she and I batted this around for a little bit, and she said, well, okay, how do you want to define it? So this is the definition that we landed on. Shots fired, armed subject calls, robberies, shootings, home invasions, and carjackings. Those were the six, six metrics that we defined violent crime as. Of course, there's more, but those are just the ones we settle on. This map shows the density of that violent, of those violent crime reports within the city of Urbana. There's, as you can see, several locations throughout the city. I see it as essentially, call it four different areas that we should be concerned with. And this is just a close-up of those violent crime reports. This is north Urbana. This is everything north of University Avenue. And this is everything south of University Avenue. I believe that is my last slide. It is. So I'm gonna stop the share real quick. That's the information that I had with respect to some crime stats and some heat maps for potential deployment locations. And I will toss it back to Brand here to lead on.
So hopefully that helps a little bit with some of the where discussion. Again, the, that has come up several times. When I was asked last time, I said we would put them, using some semblance of mayor, even combining some of these maps and trying to figure out where we would go. I can't give you the exact locations. We've actually worked. We've had a little discussion that Flock has some folks, they're specialized in this, and we would kind of work with them. Well, we could put one here, but the street's dead end, so well, maybe that one can go, we could shift, and we can do certain things. And the other thing is that the nice thing with these is that if we don't like where they're at, or like, man, this one's, we can, we can call and make an request, and for a couple hundred dollars, they will come and move and relocate that data for us. One other thing I wanted to, I forgot to mention earlier, when we were discussing as far as information sharing, I think there was some question about whether or not this would be shared with ICE, and the answer to that is no. So I wanted to try to, I wanted to say that. So I think, Jay, that's, those were the three areas we wanted to hit tonight to try to get it done in about 30 minutes there. And so at this point, I guess I'll turn it back over to you folks if you have some questions, and we'll start doing our best to try to answer them.
Thank you. Move into the discussion. I know, James, you've had your hand up, ready to go.
Yeah, yeah, I do. I have three or four things, depending on how you count them, that I wanted to ask about. First of all, I did, I did hear in the public comment a concern about ownership of the data. I do know, I do recall that Flock claimed to be CGS-certified, Criminal Justice Information System-certified. That does have meaning, that that certification process means that their staff and their data center has to meet certain criteria. And I can tell you from past experience that that's not an easy thing to do that's operated by the FBI. So I'm not particularly concerned about the fact that an organization that is certified in that way is holding the data. But I am a little bit curious about what constitutes the rights that Flock reserves for sharing the data based on their belief that they're doing the right thing. I'd like some clarification on that in the longer term. We may not have that tonight. But that, that aspect of it is worth following up on. I do want to suggest that the second bullet in the audit area, the review for abuse or improper use, I would like to suggest that it not just be the administrator. the review for abuse or improper use, I would like to suggest that it not just be the administrator that looks at that. There's a second set of eyes that reviews that on a periodic basis. Um, I know that when you're the report generator and the person responsible for it, over time, blind spots can develop. And that's why I recommend having a, a person who's not in it every day looking at it uh, just to help out. With regard to the deployment, uh, I appreciate the information uh, that was shared with heat maps and such. I do want to um, suggest that deployment should also take into account um, uh, thoroughfares or, or locations which are places where um, uh, traffic might, might go through, partially because I think there are places that I would suggest doing that with that are not necessarily in one neighborhood or another and do not cut, contribute to a concentration of a particular neighborhood or a particular segment of the population being um, surveilled. But I also think it's, it's useful that since we were talking about domestic battery, that happens anywhere in Urbana. That, that, that's not located on the, on the heat map per se. That, that could be next door to me, that could be Stone Creek, that could be anywhere. So some of, some of these need to go in places where they could be used um, both to find a, a car that was used in a violent crime that's transiting through the city or between cities. Um, but also to make sure that our, our spread of how we put these, I think we were talking about twenty, are not just like, you know, one neighborhood getting surveilled. I, I, I heard what you said about that. I understand that, that's not what you're suggesting, but, but I think that not just the places where the crimes happen, but the, but the intersections or locations that uh, would be useful in, in um, locating cars that are involved would be a good thing. And then I know that there's been uh, some concern about efficacy. I do appreciate the, the reports from the uh, two places that you were able to share. I don't, I don't quite understand, well, we can't go ahead and talk about what Flock is claiming. We can take that with a grain of salt. I, I would rather go ahead and hear about it and then know later that you've ver- validated it rather than um, just say it was pretty good, but we haven't confirmed it yet. I, I, I would like to have that data. But one of the things that I, I'm concerned about with regard to efficacy is these things are not like stealthy installations. They, they're gonna be in a place and pretty soon, people are gonna know where they're at and Google might even let people mark it on the map that where its location is. I, I, I think it's important to talk about, you know, what, what we plan to do with regard to moving them. Um, because I think efficacy uh, once they're in place for a while um, might not be uh, as, as good uh, if there's a, there's a known way to avoid the places where your car could get tagged and it's, and it's shared information. So those are just some things on my mind, uh, specifically the audit, update, uh, tweak to the audit policy and the question of what Flock considers um, using our data for what they believe is a, is a public good in their mind might mean. I don't know if there's anything I said in there that you want to respond to.
So, yeah, it was, yeah, I don't have an answer for you with regards to Flock's sharing um, uh, comment or fine print. So that is something that we'll have to get. Um, I, I, I don't know uh, Rich, if you have any other stats that you want to share tonight with some of the uh, with some of the Flock stuff and while you're, you're doing that. Um, i- i- you know, James, one of the interesting things I had that, that we would discuss with one of our first meetings with Flock's folks is that these things aren't like, they sure aren't covert, right? When you, you, when, when we showed you the pictures or thing, there's, there's solar panels. And I said, um, so do people come by and shoot them or hit them with baseball bats and bats? And it was, it, I was floored at, no, that, that, they don't. There's just so many things up and about that, that, that it hasn't been. I'm curious as to the question of whether people who have had these, do they move them? And again, twenty nineteen, they had two clients in, in Illinois and now they're up to forty, forty plus. So I don't know if they know exactly. Maybe they have some, maybe they've learned something from some other places as to whether or not they do have to, we have to rotate them around uh, to some degree. So thank you for that.
Uh, Mr. Quisenberry, I would be happy to share with you some links regarding stats. I've got, I've scribbled all over mine. Um, uh, I'll just sort of hit some of the high points on, on, on the crime sheet. Uh, talks about uh, seven total kidnappings and amber alerts solved in, including in Chambly, Georgia, Wichita, Kansas and Memphis, Tennessee. I'm familiar with the Wichita, Kansas incident. It happened, I don't know, maybe six weeks ago where a, a dad kidnapped the kids and said he was gonna kill them and they found them within, I don't know, minutes. It was very quick. Uh, dozens of murders solved, including in College Park, Georgia, Fort Worth, Texas, Shelby, Tennessee, and um, a town in California that I don't know how to pronounce. Talks about hundreds of robberies and assaults uh, solved, including in Indianapolis, Tressville, Alabama, Redlands, California. I'm not gonna bore you by reading the entire sheet. I'll send it to you. You can read it for yourself. Um, you know, one of the things I found with respect to Cobb County, Georgia, it says sixty-two percent reduction in cro- in crime in Cobb County, Georgia. That sixty-two percent number was specific to burglary and motor vehicles. So while it kind of reads as though it's an overall general reduction in crime, you have to kind of drill down, which is why I wanted to share with you places that I had spoken with. Anyhow, I will share that statistic sheet with you. There's some case studies. Um, I, I'm playing phone tag with the San Marino, California Police Department. They're in suburban Los Angeles. Um, playing phone tag with Shelby County uh, Tennessee Sheriff's Office. Um, that's Memphis, Tennessee. I will share all those with you. With respect, with respect to some specific uh, pieces of information regarding placement, you're spot on, right? Traffic volumes matter. If I put it on the street where no cars drive down, well, it's not gonna do me any good. Um, so sometimes putting cameras in places that you wouldn't necessarily think are specifically related to crime in, in, I'll just give the five-point intersection. Five-point intersection is the busiest intersection in the county, right? That's a potential location where we could put it. So we need to look at traffic volumes. We need to look at traffic flow. We need to look at uh, you know, uh, routes that people are likely to use to get out of a particular neighborhood. You know, there's, there's um, you know, twenty or probably twenty ways you can get out of Charisse's neighborhood. But people tend to use the same streets, right? In all of our neighborhoods, there are streets that are just more commonly traveled. Uh, you know, things like construction, all these things matter. So it's gonna be, it, it, it's not gonna be a real distinct way that we figure it out. We can't follow a rubric. Some of it's gonna be art and some of it's gonna be science. And so I've had some very, very basic conversations with Flock about placement. Some of the places that they have suggested that we put them, I like. Some of the places we don't. Uh, some of the places they've suggested I don't like. So it's definitely a work in progress. So that's sort of what I wanted to share with you with respect to those two issues. But I will send to the council the links for all these things so you can read it for yourself and you don't have to write it down.
Appreciate that.
Charisse?
Um, yeah. Um, I, I just wanna kind of piggyback on what uh, Brian said is um, regarding uh, something that someone with input said, which was, this wasn't a top-down anything. As a matter of fact, this wasn't an issue until me and Linda Turnbull brought it to council. It, you, it, it wasn't even thought of. It, no one else was thinking about doing anything like that. And our, our initial thing here, our initial petition as per surveillance cameras. We, that's how, that is how desperate we have been because of the simple fact that as much as, as certain good folk wanna talk about other people's civil liberties and so on and so forth. Um, it's really difficult to get a witness, to find someone that is willing to put their life on the line. They're scared of being retaliated against um, to even give information. Even the people that are actually injured in some of these particular situations will not speak up. And that is why. And this is, in my opinion, a compromise. But initially, we, we definitely wanted something what, what some people would call more invasive. But that is what you get when it appears that no one really cares. And it, like it or not, what, what some good folk wanna say about um, these particular, this, this, the ALPRs, um, nothing really invades your privacy more than a bullet in your house. Or getting shot car to car. And if I, and I do read the, the crime reports from Champagne and Urbana. And there are two types of people that I see constantly really kind of going and going through this. And this is the unknown offender and the personal transport. And I have read in Champagne and Urbana, their, their crime media reports that they have. And I see that so much unknown offender pulled up next to a car, fifteen-year-old shot in the back of the car, dropped off at Carl by a personal transport. And that's happened several times just in the past couple of months that I've read just in Champagne, which by the way, is only two blocks from my house. Or even one from my house, from where I live. And this is, no one's trying to surveil, these are not surveillance cameras. I wish, in some cases, I wish they were. I'm sure that the folks whose house got shot up on Church Street a few weeks ago, I bet you they wish there were some surveillance cameras at that time. I'm sure that woman's son wishes there was because then he wouldn't have gotten caught trying to retaliate and ran too. But it is one of those things, um, as, as much as I can appreciate people thinking that they know what um, what it's like to, to live in, in these circumstances. This is something that I've lived with since I was a kid. Shooting in Urbana is nothing new, but the ruthlessness of it is. That is what's new. The unknown offender person is new. That is not something that has, that has historically happened in our gunshot shootings in, in Urbana, at least not when I was growing up. And the other thing that I just wanted to say is that um, I think that it would behoove us to at, at least um, instead of demanding hard data, uh, which, which we, we probably won't get. You can't, you don't get hard data about something. It's, every, every place is different and you don't get hard data about something until you've put it in place. It's like that with everything. It's like that with curriculum in schools. It's like that with, uh, you know, production numbers and you're trying out a new machine or something. All, you know, that's when you start to get your data. But this is about just solving the crimes because Mr. Unknown Offender is out there all the time. And people are not, are, are not willing to give up any information, even if there's forty or fifty people sit down, uh, that, that have witnessed this crime. They are not, or you know, and it doesn't have to be that many. It can be five or six. The ones that didn't catch the bullet. They're not willing, they, they don't, we, we, they don't come up with, with who that could be. An ALPR, I, the way I see it is at the very least, it gives you a starting point. And it um, if you, if you come across a car that, that wouldn't normally be at a particular neighborhood at a particular time in the morning or at night, um, it may be helpful. As we were having our city council meeting right tonight, Urbana police knocked on my door. In the middle of public input, I had to go and answer the door because there was, there were shots heard someplace. And they just wanted information. And I, and I had to say, well, this time, no, I didn't hear anything. Because I'm in a city council meeting. So that's where my concentration was at the time. So um, I just, I, I understand uh, some people's uh, hesitancy, some, some of the public's hesitancy. I understand some of uh, uh, folks that look like me, you know? I understand some of their hesitancy and God knows, we know the history and, and all that stuff. But nothing really invades your privacy more than, than a bullet. So um, I, I want people to really kind of understand um, that this is not to surveil our neighborhoods. This is not to fence people in. I've uh, watched this, another city council meeting in Cham- in Champagne or their little informant meeting. Um, it's not, that's not what it's for. It's to give our officers a starting point because we don't have that cooperation that you may be thinking that we have. That's not what's happening. And this is a starting point so that you can, the police can do what they're supposed to do, which is investigate. If you don't know where to start, then a, a lot of these parents and family members whose children are being murdered and injured, um, there's nothing quite like having a family member murdered. I know what that feels like.
So.
Mary Alice.
Um, so uh, Chief, uh, thank you for, for uh, working on this draft policy and, and Rich, I really appreciate reaching out in, independently to these uh, different police departments that um, Flocks had provided data about. So it's nice to get some independent verification on that. Um, one thing, and I don't think it actually belongs in this policy, but I do think it's something that we should have a conversation about if we agree to this uh, expenditure and, and to the deployment, um, which is sharing data across different government entities. And so we certainly live in an area that is the greater Champagne, Urbana region, which has multiple different entities. We have the Sheriff's Department, the university in Champagne. And um, I, I would like to be very transparent about what those agreements are. And so I don't know if it's appropriate to put in policy. I don't think it is. But it needs to be put somewhere that any uh, other municipality, any other, you know, agency that we agree to share data with has to go through an IGA, intergovernmental agreement, or whatever is the appropriate terminology for that. Um, because I, I can, i- if, if council agrees that this is an expenditure that we should do, I do think that it would tie our hands if we did not share it across Champagne, Urbana area. I'm not saying even outside of Champagne area, but I'd also like to have those agreements in place because they're gonna have different policies just like we do. So we have to have some kind of common understanding in terms of the use of the data. Um, so, so that, that was one big piece. And, and James certainly covered a lot of the other data issues that I had concerns about. So I wanted to throw that out there for conversation.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll converse about that. Um, I, so typically, Mary Alice, like, the, the extent some of the data sharing is, is, is literally like some of it's as simple as like checkboxes somehow within, within sort of the backend of, of the software. And so the idea is um, that we, you would say, yeah, you can see some of ours and we can see some of yours and, and et cetera. Um, I, I, I don't know, I'm not familiar with, we haven't had discussions with the, the Flock folks to kind of say, hey, if you had to do an IGA every time that we wanna go through a- and do one of these, um, you know, we share, we share information with, especially within the county very routinely. So um, I, I'm not saying we couldn't do it, but it would be, it would be a lift if we're giving one. Well, we have this one in the county and this one with Champagne. We, we, it would take a little thinking to see how that might work.
What do we do right now? I know that arms is going away, but that's certainly a shared least database that we have amongst our, all these different entities. And we have an agreement, right, in terms of how that data is shared?
We, we have an agreement that we will share, correct, that we will all work together and that we will, we will share. But I, you know, with regards to whether the, the, how far down you drill into the specifics, well, I think you can see this. No, that, that's, that, those sorts of decisions, and I don't know if, if Dave Wesner wants to weigh in or anything. And I don't know if, if Dave Wesner wants to weigh in or anything, but those sorts of decisions have been traditionally left. We work together as chiefs and we decide, yes, we want to be able to see this and we will share this information amongst ourselves. So that if I want to go and say, oh, look, I, I pull up ARMS and I see that Champagne, uh, the county has a more recent contact with the person, well, I will look at, oh, that's the address that they gave to Champagne or to the county. So the Urbana address, we know is a couple of years old. This one is newer. I'm going to go where the new address is. So we make those decisions routinely, um, uh, as, as, as law enforcement.
I mean, in, in my mind, there is nothing new with data sharing amongst these different entities we have here. It is just purely the type of data that we are sharing.
I think that's correct.
Thank you.
Grace.
Thanks. Um, I would still like to see, uh, more data, some data from a credible third party, not from FLOX or anecdotes about the effectiveness and use of this kind of technology. So I'd still appreciate that. And I think that if we were to move forward on this, another important piece of information would be the current situation as kind of a benchmark for UPD, like our encounters, violent crime, percent solved, unsolved. So that if we were to move forward with this, we have a benchmark of comparison. So I'm, I'm still interested in that information. And I also would like us to consider, um, a clear criteria for the hot list. Like I think that it should be used for harm or reasonable suspected harm to another person or crime involving a gun or weapon, um, not for property crimes or back payment or things like that. So I think that we need to have a clear criteria for the hot list. And then I also have questions too about if other jurisdictions could add things to our hot list. Like would Champagne and campus's hot list automatically be on ours? And then making sure that that criteria is aligned. Um, I also agree with the regular reporting, um, especially at the, you know, before the year's contract, I think biannually or quarterly would be good, including any reports of, um, abuse, misuse, complaints, the effectiveness of it, um, and also the audits of queries from other jurisdictions as well as our own. I think that would be important. And then also I'm wondering what will be the accountability for this policy of oversight for within UPD and for other jurisdictions?
Okay, so, um, you threw a lot out there. Let's see, let's see what I can remember. Uh, with regards to the hot list, our hot list is our hot list. I have no, I have not heard anything about the local hot lists that would merge them together. With regards to the third party data, I, I don't have, we've looked at some people, evidently, there's all sorts of things out there. I will tell you, uh, with some of this that, no, that's why I started my comments with, I don't think this is the be all end all, the end all gun violence. And I wanted to be clear about, about that at, at the beginning, um, that it's not how I'm selling it. And I believe this is a valuable investigative tool. Uh, you asked about accountability within, um, any policy that I have talked about with the council, there's always discussion about accountability. And if you do this in fraction, what is the discipline? And I will say, like I say every time, that, that is a totality of the circumstances sort of analysis. And there is a progressive discipline model that we, that we subscribe to here. And, um, and again, that is, that, that is my response, I guess, to, to, to that accountability. With regards to accountability in, um, for other, um, organizations, if, if it were to be determined that someone was abusing this and we reported it to the, the champagne chief, that the champagne officer did X, Y, or Z, if the, if it was not addressed in an appropriate fashion that we felt was acceptable, we would, I guess, then stop sharing. I guess it could be ultimately where that would land. Great. What else did I, what else did you have on there that you wanted me to respond to?
Hot list criteria.
Hot list criteria. Thank you for the input. That, that's, that's the kind of stuff that we were, we were sort of, we, we were discussing. And, and again, I think the registration and the city ordinance violations, no, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do a- a- anything with that. Some had, have offered, well, felonies there and or misdemeanors. Uh, yours seems a little more specialized even th- than that. So I, I appreciate the input.
Um, can we look at, um, letter I under ALPR operation? Could you sort of run, run through this for me? Like if it's the officer's responsibility to remove the located vehicle from the hot list, how does that, um, coincide with, with, I guess, sort of their access? Um, if it's only sort of authorized users and sworn officers receive it, but how can they edit it?
So, and, and that's, that's why there's the language of the supervisor. So ultimately, let's, an officer might go and make some sort of stop, determine that there was a confusion and they did pay the, whatever the issue was and they get it resolved. With the onus then to go, the officer needs then to go find their supervisor who does have access and said, hey, I responded to this particular, um, I got this alert. The car drove right past me. I did X, Y, and Z, and now the alert is cleared. I, we, boss, we need to get this out. And the supervisor then would have to take it out. So, but, but the impetus would be on that officer to make sure that that got done. Because I don't want any of these events that we hear about, um, about somebody's car that's stayed in when it shouldn't have stayed in the license plate. Does that help?
Yes. And so what about, um, the, the other ones like the amber alerts and the silver alerts? Those are automatically in the system and taking out when, when those are done, correct? But, but the other ones on our local hot list would have to be physically removed.
Correct. So, um, so even, e- even now, um, during a traffic stop for whatever reason, and then there's, oh, there's a, um, this car is stolen out of Joliet. And then we would detain it, figure it out, coordinate with Joliet. And then we tell Joliet, hey, well, however, however they want to just, to determine the, 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 uh, or find the solution, Joliet would make sure that that car gets taken out of leads. That's whether we have LPRs or not. Okay. So the LPR, all it's doing is sort of this, this, this sort of, uh, this automated component to that and then alerting if it finds something.
And I think that if, i- if these were to be deployed too, I think that it is important that we keep track of, you know, incidents where the car should be off the list, um, as well. And I also think that if there are going to be any changes to the policy, that, um, it should be brought to our attention. Just because if we're, if we're looking at this now and we're agreeing on things and there are, you know, after deployment, you know, certain things, you learn different things. I would like to see, um, those changes, you know, note, council notified of those changes. Another question is, um, Deputy Chief Searls talked about the reduction in crime in other places, um, particularly burglary and vehicle theft. What would be the measure of success here? Um, say this is, you know, we're signing this one year agreement. Well, we can call it a trial. What would be our, our determinant of success? Is it, you know, if we have one ALPR involvement a day? Or, you know, how do we determine success and say that, yes, after, you know, six months, it's looking really good? We're going to keep going. Do we have a, a defined success rate around that yet?
So I think that's a great question. And, um, we've, I've thought about it. I have. I will tell you, reductions is a great measure of success. I, I, I think, at least that's, that's part of, of the analysis. I also think it does include sometimes, I guess, anecdotal, um, evidence that if indeed like Rand Tool's, uh, incident that we heard about this past summer, that again, was one of the driving forces as to why we're having this conversation. So I, I, I think there's some room for, um, ma- maybe we, maybe the stats don't necessarily all go, the, the tumble and, and, oh my gosh, look at how much everything's reduced. But we've had three high profile cases where it was successful. And it was used and it was an integral tool in the, uh, for the detectives. I would say that's a success, even if we don't necessarily have, um, a twenty-two percent reduction in X, Y, or Z.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I have more, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, thanks for the presentation, Chief and Deputy Chief Searls. And thank you for developing this policy. Appreciate the fast work on that. Let's stress this again though. Because, you know, Sharice's heartfelt discussion clearly indicates and, and other public input that we've heard, the public still believes that this is going to stop shootings. Can you kind of stress that that's not what this camera does?
It's going to stop shootings. I do believe it'll be helpful in investigating the shootings that we have had and have not been able to solve. That is what I think. I do not think that it will stop shootings. People have been shooting in, or Champagne, Urbana, and especially here on the North End since I was old enough to remember. There are areas in, in my own neighborhood, my parents did not allow me to go into because of so many shootings. So no, I don't believe that, but I do believe that it will help it with investigating and just starting to get information. You can't get information and find out who's doing stuff if no one is going to give you any information. That's what I believe.
Let me ask you about that, Chief. Um, in order to identify a car, how is that done? Like how was it done in Rantoul that day on August third?
So i- i- and, and I, I guess, Rich, maybe if I, I want to make sure I get this right. Now you, I think you had first, some firsthand discussion about it. The way I understand it is there was a shooting that had occurred. The description was something similar, a small white car.
Okay, a description from who? Who gave you that description?
Well, it didn't give it, no one gave me that, but yes.
I know, but I mean, you know, but somebody had this talk and tell somebody about that car, right?
Correct. The description was a small white car.
Still depends on people giving information, right?
Yes, we, we absolutely need some level of cooperation.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, if it's two fifteen in the morning, there's a shooting at two fifteen in the morning and there are no other cars, well, then that's a little bit easier for us. Hey, oh, well, let's, let's at least, here's a lead. Let's at least follow up on it.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. Let me ask you this. If we were to, um, install these camera, um, license plate readers, I asked you, uh, in email, uh, would it be possible to provide an annual report on what the license plate readers did?
Yes.
Over the year?
Yes, we would be able, we would be able to get some sort of, a- a- and again, this is sort of me. I don't have the system yet, so we, some of what we've discussed and talked about, which is how many, how many reads were there? What cameras were, um, uh, hitting more, uh, re- reads than others? What was the success rate? Just because of one goes through and we, hey, there's an alert. Well, if, if it's at the, at the northwest part of town and all the officers are down in the southeast part of town dealing with the situation, we might not even get to where it's at to even be able to do anything with that particular alert. So yes, I would, I would see that we, it's my understanding that the system would help us generate something that would be useful, um, for analysis for the, for us and for the council.
Would you get a count of arrests and what the arrests were for? Can we get a count, get counts like that?
My, my, my answer to that is most probably. I, I, I think so, but again, I'm not exactly sure how easy some of this would be to put together. So sometimes, uh, I, I don't want to, uh, um, over promise and under deliver, but I would imagine that we would be able to, um, get some, something, uh, on point.
Okay, I'm going to let Grace go.
Grace, go ahead. Thanks. Um, I had some specific feedback about the policy on some languagey things. If you're, um, sounds like you're open to that. Um, on the purpose and scope, I don't like the language of facilitate the apprehension of criminals. Um, I think that's dehumanizing language and it's better to use people first language, something like persons who are reasonably suspect of committing a crime. I think that's also important on principle because if you think about it, it seems like police rarely deal with criminals because they're not considered criminal until they've been tried in court. So these are people suspect of something. And so I think that's important distinction in using people first language. Um, also under the misuse and abuse of the system, I would like to see the word shall instead of may be subject to sanctions and disciplinary action. Um, I understand some flexibility there, but I feel like if someone uses it for any of those criteria, for harassment, intimidation, surveillance, personal use, or not consistent with legitimate law enforcement business, um, that's, I think that's a pretty clear ground for shall, have some sort of discipline there, um, because those are very clear things.
I'm sorry, Grace, that's four thirty-one point three and you're talking about, uh, paragraph D David, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to see the word shall instead of may.
Understood. Okay.
If it would be carried out as such, you know, not just performatively to make me happy, but if that's actually something that could be followed.
Hey, let me, let me ask you this question about that first paragraph there for official use only to facilitate the furtherance of investigations. Purpose and scope.
Yes, I think if that's what we see is accurate, to facilitate in investigations, you said?
To facilitate the furtherance of investigations.
I think that would be, um, a more dignified and precise language.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then also, not really directly related to that, but big picture off of G on that same section about the audits. I was wondering if we're talking about the audit and report as separate things? Cause it seems like an audit is maybe a more regular internal check. And then a report would be more forward facing for public and the council. So I don't know if that's my correct understanding, but I think something in the public would be helpful that includes maybe a summary of the audits with a redacted version of, you know, maybe if there was any misuse or how it was used. Um, and then also I think another important piece of information for me would be the rate that these have been involved in solving cases for, um, categorized specific kinds of issues. So I'll back up, sorry, to that question too. If audits and report are separate things, first of all?
I would say yes, audits and reports are separate things.
And could a report be outward facing for the council and the public?
I guess I'd have to figure out what exactly, so i- if we're talking about, so Mr. Evans asked me, Chris asked, he said, hey, can you, can you generate a report? And I, and I, that's my understanding that yes, with the data, we'd be able to generate some sort of report that we ran twenty thousand license plates and we had seventy-eight, um, alerts and we had fifty-two stops that resulted in fourteen arrests or, you know, that, that kind of thing. I, I, I think maybe that, and, and these were the crimes for which we, we were involved. And we could, we could sort of, we, we could do that. And then your question then Grace is, could a subsection of that, then, and then we did audits and we did, we audited, you know, fifty different, um, entries and fifty different queries or whatever. And then we determined that there was no malfeasance or there was, is that, am I, am I sort of articulating what you're envisioning?
Uh, yes, yeah. I think that if those are separate things and the report is a broader, um, outward facing document, that some sort of a summary of the audits would be helpful in there.
Okay.
And like you said, those general statistics. And then again, what I would find particularly interesting in their effectiveness is at what rate or to what extent have they been used in solving violent crime towards other human beings?
Go ahead, Chris.
Okay, thanks. Um, De- Deputy Chief Searls, do you have any plans to talk to any other cities besides Joliet in Illinois?
Yeah, I've got, um, I've got messages out to Marietta, Georgia, to San Marino, California, and to Shelby County, Tennessee. I've, I've been playing phone tag all day.
No, no, I mean in Illinois. Do you, are you going to talk to any towns in Illinois?
Sure.
Besides Joliet?
I mean, I can call Rantoul, I can call Decatur. Decatur just implemented there, so I don't know that we'll get a ton of valuable information from them.
Yeah. Well, the reason why I ask is because I, you know, I was, you know, doing some searching and, uh, you know, like cities. and, you know, like cities like Peoria who have the cameras, and they've got 24 homicides, no reduction in shootings whatsoever.
I believe, I believe they're new to Peoria as well.
Are they new? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, anyway, just any, like, I would like to see a little bit more information of what's going on in Illinois.
Sure.
I mean, Flock's gonna give you their best of the best all over the country, but...
Of course. So, so one of the things that, that Dan told us with respect to Flock in Illinois is it's relatively new, just a handful of years. And I want to say the number, and Bryant, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think the number is 40 agencies in Illinois. So, it's not a ton. I, I think Joliet's gonna be one of the longer-term users, and that was, that was one of the two case studies that, you know, I sort of followed up on.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice?
Okay, Chris, to just piggyback on your, on your query. East Peoria has had ALPRs for a while longer. Peoria, I don't know what to call it, city, because they're two separate jurisdictions, apparently. Because I did put out a, a feeler regarding their ALPRs in East Peoria, well, in Peoria. And the police chief in Peoria has only been there for a few weeks or a few months. He's new. He said that he would, however, pass on that information to the chief, because I wanted, there were questions that I had about their ALPRs. I haven't heard anything back, but, Rich, you might want to reach out to the, the, the folks in East Peoria, because I think they've had them longer. My understanding is that they've been actually satisfied with, with how they've been able to operate the, that's operated for them. Peoria, though, is looking, is also basically doing what we're doing, and they're looking into getting the ALPRs. I think they've already had them approved. I'm not sure. But that, just to, you know, give you a little bit of information about that. So, East Peoria is different than Peoria proper. And I have done, I have put out some feelers to get some information about that, to see if I could, you know, get someone to talk to me about that, but I haven't gotten any information back yet.
I can make contact both at East Peoria and Peoria City. Between Bryant and I, I'm sure we've got contacts at both agencies.
Okay.
Chandra?
Okay, so we talked about the, the date of being held for 30 days. Is that 30 days on Flock's server, or 30 days that we have access to it?
It's my understanding that's 30 days on their server. So, I, i- i- if, if I know, if I've learned anything about my IT friends, there's always, we got space and data storage, so it's my, that's it. So, if we call them on day 31, say, hey, have you had some, sorry, that you're, we store it for 30 days, so.
And, and just to, to sort of piggyback on what the chief said, on day 31, it's gone, gone. It's not just gone, it's gone, gone. There's no backup, there's no getting it back. It's, it's, it's purged and irretrievable.
Okay. So, I, I'm sort of, you, you mentioned as an example of like 52 stops and 14 arrests as a, a point of reporting. So, what troubles me about that is, is the remaining people that are impacted by those stops. I mean, for me, police stops in general are traumatic, and so I'm just, I want to, you know, point out my concern about the remaining, what, like 38 people that are not arrested, but are just, are stopped because, I don't know, their, their, I don't know, their car or their color or whatever is, is on this hot list, or, and it's supposed to be off, or, or whatever. So, I just, I want to, you know, maybe let's remember, you know, something about those other people who, who might have that lingering traumatic, and lingering traumatic feelings from being stopped as well. So, I want to make sure we're thinking about that as well.
Chandra, yes. A- and please note that I just totally made those numbers up, talking to everyone here tonight, just to sort of give a flavor of what I, you know, so. Don't look, please don't read into those any more than that. I will tell you that I, I absolutely understand that. That's why we have to have, that's why we want to, this is a tool. Just because somebody gets, we have to confirm, we have to verify. And I get it. I've been in this job for 27 years. And when I see a squad car, my foot comes off the gas, and I look how fast is I going, just like we all did. So, I, I understand, and I haven't had a traumatic experience, so I can't see what that's like. But your, your point is well-taken. Thank you.
I want to be mindful of time. Grace, did you have something else you want to add in before we move on to trying to vote? I was wondering if you're looking for a motion that would, motion, if we're at that point. I would like to move to defer this to stay in committee of the whole. I am not sure about the next one, November 1st, or the following one, the 15th, because I would like to have input from the town hall meetings by then. And that's also maybe another point, too. My understanding was that this would be more listening sessions. It seems like it's more giving information, which is also important, and the Q and A, but I would like some more community input. So, I think that if the town hall sessions had some kind of summary available by November 1st, which would be just the next Monday, or the recordings were available, you know, that weekend, I think that would be okay, but if they weren't available, I would consider keeping this until the following committee of the whole.
I'll second.
Can you clarify which date? I guess that's kind of a preemptive question, if staff thought that by the 1st, the town hall sessions would be available and that input compiled in that short time or not?
I, I think the 1st would be fine, because we can always defer it to the following committee of the whole, if, if we feel it's not ready at that point.
Okay.
If it makes it and we're comfortable, then we can do something on the 1st. If, if there's a reason the town halls lead to further investigation or further discussion, or we need another kind of input cycle, then, then we can, we can always push it further out. We can't reel it closer in if it does turn out that we're ready on November 1st, and we said the 15th.
Then I will have my motion be for deferring this to keep in committee of the whole for the following one, November 1st. Motion by Grace, second by Chris. Can the clerk please call the roll?
I think, Jay, I think Sharice had her hand up.
I'm sorry, was there further discussion? My, my internet's doing that thing. I apologize.
I'm just being mindful of the fact that this is a budget amendment, and it's not about actually voting for getting the ALPRs. This is just a, this is just a, a, an ordinance to have the money available when the boat goes through. It's not about purchasing them right now. This is a budget amendment to have the financing available.
So, just procedural-wise, th- this is a budget amendment. What would be the next steps after, if, let's say this was approved next week? What would be the next steps down the road for us before we actually deployed it? And if at any time during those steps, is there an opportunity for council to vote thumbs up or thumbs down? If somebody could, I don't know if that's a Carol question, a Diane, a Bryant, I don't think Elizabeth's here, so.
I, I actually think it's more of a Dave Westner question, honestly. Because I think once you authorize the funds, there isn't any formal voting that would make sense, but that's, that's why I'd like Dave to answer.
Sure. Thanks, Carolyn. And honestly, you are right, and, and that's why I think it's important, maybe note that is, if for some reason you voted to approve this budget amendment, I guess obviously at the council meeting next week, is once the funds are available within a departmental budget, they're available to be spent. It would allow them to purchase to, to occur, and so I suppose perhaps that's the nature of the question is, from Councilmember Wu, is if that were to occur, how quickly then would they be purchased and deployed, given, I think, the conversation about trying to receive the input from the town hall meetings?
Jay?
Any further discussion, James?
Yeah, and I, I will also point out,
Yeah, go ahead, James.
Because this is a budget amendment, it requires, I believe, six votes. Is that correct, out of eight, including the mayor? And so, going ahead and voting on it tonight, with several council members having questions that they want to have answered and wanting to see input from the town halls, I, I think pressing ahead with a vote tonight is maybe not the best idea.
Can I share some information with respect to sort of the logistics of actually implementing this process and this, this technology? Obviously, there's the policy issue. We're gonna need to determine the locations for deployment. We're gonna have to get on the, the worklist, you know. If, if we call up and say, I'll take 20, they're not gonna go in tomorrow, right? It's probably at least a month before we get them put in. And of course, the policy requires training, and that's gonna take some time to develop and implement and, and, and get delivered. So, the, the rollout for this is, is going to take a little bit of time. So, this is, this is not something where we go zero to 60 overnight.
We have a, a motion and a second to keep it in the committee of the whole. Is there further discussion, Chandra?
I was just gonna ask, is weather a factor? Like, can they go up when it's snowing? Like, what does that, have they said anything about that as we approach winter?
I, I think the, I think the wrinkle with weather is probably sinking new poles, but they can, they can mount them multiple different ways. My guess is, it's, if it's a factor, it's probably not a huge factor. They can probably get, get through that issue easy enough.
Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hersi?
No.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
The motion passes. Think we might need a motion to extend the meeting?
I would motion to extend till 11 o'clock.
I'll second.
Motion by Grace, second by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next, we have an ordinance, ordinance number 2021-10-045, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of R and T-2 liquor licenses for Hari Om Urbana, Inc., DBA Rosati's Pizza, Urbana, Illinois.
Yes, this is to, the owners of Rosati's have requested an R and T-2 liquor license, which is for beer and wine. If you may, you may recall, Rosati's closed during the pandemic. It's been sold, and the new owners have to apply for a liquor license, because in the state of Illinois, liquor licenses are attached to the individual owners, not a particular location. So, if you're looking on your ordinance, the way we do things here in the city of Urbana, there's no set number or no set cap on the number of liquor licenses or video gaming terminal licenses, for that matter. Each time a person applies for a liquor license, it comes to council, and council has the ability to vote it up or down. So, in this case, the, and then you'll see it on the chart on page one, and basically front and back of the ordinance. You'll see a couple of changes on that chart. One is in classification of a Class A license. We went from eight to seven since the last time an ordinance came before the council. That was due to the fact that the iron post didn't renew their liquor license this, this new round. In fact, they've closed right now. So, we lost one Class A, Class A location, and then on the back of the page, the R and T-2 is increasing from 11 to 12, and that reflects the Rosati's liquor license. So, I, I recommend, or I'd ask that you would approve this application. Happy to take any questions.
Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion. All right, I move, I have my paper. May I move ordinance number 2021-10-101? Let me start over. Ordinance number 2021-10-045, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing the number of R and T-2 liquor licenses for Hari Om of Urbana Incorporated for Rosati's Pizza to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have one discussion item, since the ALPR policy discussion was moved to earlier in the meeting. So, there's a discussion related to action items by council. I'm sorry, discussion item is procedural, so related to action items by council. This was added by Councilmember Bishop, and a supplementary document was provided by myself based on individual conversations with council members prior to this discussion.
Yeah, so I added this item to the agenda, just for an opportunity to have a conversation for both council and staff to clarify and communicate what info exactly is needed to ensure that things are executed accurately and in a timely manner. So, the, the memo provided sort of points out one instance, and that being the, the co-responder model, where council thought that they had been very clear on what was, what they wanted, but it, it turned out that there was a little bit of, I guess, miscommunication there, and so we just, I just wanted to have, take a moment and, and sort of allow us to have this conversation, addressing the process of, of, of how we add things to the agenda and, and move projects forward and such. So, I, I welcome, I've talked to some of my fellow council members about things, so I welcome the opportunity to... So I welcome, um, the opportunity to, to sort of, uh, take this moment to address staff and, and make sure that we're all on the same page, so that we are doing things that benefit the, the community and, and moving things along, because we do have a lot to do.
I was wondering if, um, if we could ask Dave Westner to maybe ground the conversation in, um, in, um, a clarification maybe about the, the roles of the council relative to, um, the executive. And I say that because, um, i- it's really an extension of the conversation we just had about the action on the budget amendment, um, and where the council, where, where the, where the action item is for the council. And, um, and I think there was some lack of understanding on, on, uh, on the, the issue about the co-responder model, about where the action item was, um, and, and what action was even expected. Um, so I'm, I'm just, if, if you're amenable, maybe, uh, and, and, uh, Dave could just, you know, get us all on the same page about roles, if, if, if you're amenable to that, um, before we start the conversation.
Chandra, this is your item. Do you wanna weigh in on?
I mean, sure, why not? I mean, Grace, uh, you seem to have something.
So I, I think maybe if we can come back to that, I, I think it is important that we hear that piece, but I think it's also important to, to create that space for council members who's have been asking for a space to have this discussion. So I think both, right? Um, so Grace, if you want to hop in, and we'll make sure we, we have that clarification as well.
Um, I was just gonna say, I don't know that clarification is necessary. Um, I'm not opposed to it, but I don't think it's necessary because this was about the budget, and that is, you know, within council prerogative. Um, so I, I don't think it's necessary here.
I, I don't, I, 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 I don't wanna get argumentative about it, but I, I do want to say that one of the things that, I, 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 I do think there's maybe a little bit of misunderstanding, and that the phraseology co-equal branches, uh, uh, in describing the, the mayor and the, and the, um, alderman, I think that, that, I think that some clarification would be useful. Um, but, um, it's, it's, it's your, it's your discussion.
Diane?
I'd just like to give a little bit of history, kind of how we got, maybe how we got to the point where we are.
Okay. Um, and, and this is specifically with regard to the language in the budget ordinance that, uh, referred to consulting with the council and holding a public, uh, hearing. And I do think there was a question of some miss- a misunderstanding and miscommunication. And I certainly was operating based on how we've operated in the past, and I know staff was too. And frequently, um, when there are, uh, we wanna run an idea past the city council or a topic is complex, and we think there needs to be some extra background provided, you know, all sorts of reasons. We've, we've often held the council two-by-tos, which are where we have council members come in and one or twos and meet with staff in order to comply with Open Meetings Act, but still give us an opportunity to provide additional information. So when the, when, um, the language consulting with the council was included in the budget ordinance, that typically is what I understood as that's a two-by-two. You, 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 you have a conversation. I'm not in those conversations because that would add another elected official to the mix, and that's a violation. So, um, in this case, I know that when city staff, it was this particular topic, it was with, um, Deputy Chiefs Searls and Carol Mitten. I know when the two of them met with each, each of you, either in ones or twos, um, they, they were, I, like I said, I wasn't in the conversations, but based on what was described to me afterwards, is they came away with the sense that, that at least six of the seven council members had been very supportive of this, um, follow-up co-responder approach. And more importantly, felt like they had been given the go-ahead to, yeah, go ahead and plan for implementation. And because, as I think Mary Alice pointed out a couple of weeks ago, this doesn't involve any more new money, that, um, so that doesn't require an actual vote by the council because it doesn't involve an expenditure of new funds, um, that, that we had been given that go-ahead. And when some concerns, actually, I think Jaya may have raised concerns, and once that was raised, I know that, um, at least a couple of the council members who had these two-by-tos also were asked, do you think that what we're planning to do is inconsistent with the budget ordinance that was just passed? And the answer was no, it's perfectly consistent. So, so we were operating under the impression that we had the go-ahead to do this. And, and apparently that is not what some of you all felt. Now, I know some of you did feel you had been consulted, so, you know, it depends on individual council members. But, but historically, for efficiency's sake, these two-by-two conversations are actually help us move things along in the city. We cannot meet every day of the week to discuss every single thing. So these individual con- consultations, and that's what they are. Their individual consultations with council members are incredibly important to keep things moving in the city. And then when you get to the point where you do your legislative role, and we're responsible for the operational, um, end of things and proposing the legislation, I think it works very well. So, there wasn't, um, you know, I, 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 I recognize now that there needed to be more clarification, but I also think it's important for all of us, including the public, to, to be reminded of our, of our respective roles. But as far as the consultation, what, what you had over the summer regarding these LPRs, and I think we've done some two-by-tos on other topics, um, is, is certainly what we've used for the last four years. And Charisse and Mary Alice can speak to that. And it helps us get things moving along.
I wanna make sure your council members have a chance to sway, and I see that Grace, this is her hand up. We're getting low on time. Grace, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I, yes, I agree. I think this was a misunderstanding. I've had some good conversations with some staff. And I think that we can remedy this to be more clear on this exact intention for this budget and future ones. Um, I, I will speak for myself, saying that when I agreed to this in July, when we passed the budget, I was under the understanding that it was binding, and I did not catch consultation rather than approval, and expect it to be that one conversation in the summer, and that count as, um, you know, my one time for input. I think that it is important to have discussions on the record. I understand that, you know, some things might be in-depth and preliminary, and we could have one-on-one or in pairs. But I think it's important that official business, especially about something with such gravity, be done on the record. Um, and I think that was at least my intention when this was first brought up and approved. So I'm trying to stay focused on the solutions here, and I think that a clear action item would be that we could remedy this with a budget amendment that would make the language more clear for what the intention was. And I also want to bring it back to the big picture idea here, is that, um, you realizing the urgency and the importance of community safety and community violence, that that's why we agreed on the importance of having a community safety review, so that we're doing something that is effective and evidence-based and for the unique challenges for Urbana. And I don't wanna lose sight of that really important overall goal that I think is kind of the background for also these other conversations of models that we're having. So I would also like to, um, work as a council in how we can, outside of meetings and during meetings, with OMA on a scope of work for requests for proposals for community safety review, and so that we can assist staff in making sure that that happens. So, um, I'm also interested if there is, um, interest in doing a budget amendment to make that more clear and, um, assisting staff with the scope of work for requests for proposals for the community safety review.
We need to make, we need to check with staff to see if that budget amendment approach is even workable at this point. So that's something we'd have to look into.
So I saw Chris's hand, but then it went down. Chris, did you wanna hop in? Okay, Mary Alice?
No, actually, that was just gonna be my question today, was, um, if we're not changing money, but rather altering, uh, the, but I don't know how that would work legally.
Yeah, I guess if we're talking about, you know, the co-responder model, it's not necessarily really a budgetary issue, at least from my perspective, uh, because it's more of the administrative role of assigning personnel and assigning duties versus the concept of expenditure of money.
James, did you wanna jump in?
What, the thing, a couple of things I wanted to talk about, and I do, I've had some side conversations with individuals about this. And, and, in, in this particular case, um, I, I thought it is important to have this conversation because there are a couple of things that I think, um, we need to be clear about, um, from a council standpoint, is that if the council expresses a desire to move forward on something, and it is, um, hard to do from a staffing or a resource standpoint, I think, I think we need that feedback, because we do have the opportunity to either put more burden on us as individual council members, or we could actually look to third parties, um, to, to move things forward that we might not be able to move forward with staff. And so that's an important piece of feedback that we need to have. And the oth- the other thing is, um, uh, this, this is a majority new council. Um, I, I think there has been a lot of learning and questions and, um, you know, procedures and, and other things that, that, uh, I think people have rightfully, uh, needed, uh, more feedback and more time to, uh, get things going. But on the flip side, you know, the city has to move on. And so, I, I'm, I'm gonna ask for, um, some patience on this from both my colleagues on council and from, from staff and the mayor, that, that we, we, we pushed back on a lot of things over the last several months because it, it's a big step to get our arms around the responsibilities and make sure we're doing what we, um, think we are doing, uh, with, with our, with our actions. And, and that's very frustrating for, uh, an operation that has, you know, been working with a group of people that had been doing it for several years and, and don't, you know, take some things for granted or understand how certain things work. Um, I do also think that, uh, it is, it is a challenge when, when you've been elected to a council position, and you, you've come in with a, uh, a mandate from your constituents to, to make change or make policy or to address the concerns that you said you were gonna work on, and it, it doesn't work as fast as you think, and you find out that council is a legislative body and is not in the weeds of operations and does not have that, um, executive authority for getting things done. I, I, I think, I think that's true in any circumstance where you're part of a legislative body and you have a strong executive, um, branch of government that you work with. And, um, and yet, you know, that's our part. I, I don't know, I, I'm not exactly sure where the co-equal branches of government came from. I, I am actually one who is curious to see more about how that is defined. Um, we, we have our purview as council, and the mayor has her purview as chief executive and what, what she delegates to staff. And, and understanding that and knowing that, um, you know, once we've approved money, a department using that has, has some prerogative with, with that, as long as it stays within certain bounds, is, is something I think we have to work on accepting and, and being either more clear at the beginning and, and make, building that in, or, um, find our, find our own path to influence what happens afterwards. Because it's not in, it's not in the weeds of operations. That's, that's not where a council sits. A council sits on, on governance and policy and guidance and, and not in the detail. At least that's, that's, uh, where I've, I've come from in that, in that perspective. So, those are the things that have come to my mind as I've talked to Grace and Jaya and Chandra over the last couple of days. I hope it's helpful.
Chandra?
Um, so I think, uh, James definitely hit on, uh, a few things. Um, one, the fact that, that several of us are new, um, and, and we are trying to grasp our role and, and understand, um, exactly what our limitations are. And also in a sense that, you know, because we're new, we, we are going to do things differently and, and ask for things in a different way. So I think, you know, as James said, expect some patience on both sides. Um, so I think, um, we, we need to sort of clarify exactly what staff needs, um, when we ask for things. For instance, when I brought up the idea of having the council priority meeting, um, it is now, you know, something that's going to be facilitated and, and all of this. Like, I didn't, I didn't think it would be something that big. I thought it was, could just be a conversation simply as we're doing right now. Um, and so, it, it would have been, you know, good to have that, you know, feedback to me months ago to say, oh, we think that, you know, the idea of having a facilitator and blah, blah, blah would be good versus sort of like, um, silence and, and making council feel that, you know, it isn't a priority for, for staff. And so I think just that sort of communication is sort of what the, what the bare bones of, of this conversation, um, boils down to. Um, just making sure that, you know, everyone's clear about if, if we're requesting something, what exactly do we need? For instance, the RFP, I know that Jay and I spoke with, um, you know, when we proposed this budget ordinance, if, if you all needed, you know, examples of what an RFP looked like, and, and no one said, yes, please send that over, you, it seemed like you guys had it. And, uh, and like James said, if, if we need to put in more, more work to get, you know, our initiatives and our things moving forward, then I, I'm most certainly happy to do that. Um, we just need to know. Um, so I think that's just the bottom line, and I know time is running short, and I just, that is the basis for this, um, conversation um, from my perspective.
Grace?
Thanks. Uh, just wanted to quickly say that, um, you know, I understand the difference with the roles and that as council, we're not part of the operational piece, um, and that it's not our full-time thing. And so we're not informed with what's going on, on a day-to-day basis. Um, and as challenging as that is, the more I've come to understand the importance of that role to have an outside perspective and still have a voice on things. So I think that it's really important, and I do understand, um, to some extent, you know, what is our role and what is not our role as council. Um, and I think that, so when things come to us for approval, I think that is absolutely council's role. So I don't need to talk on what's, is and isn't up to council when things come to us for approval. That seems like something in our purview. Um, also things like the budget. And for me, there's not a default yes to everything. Um, for me, I'm coming in with everything with an open mind and not determined one way or the other. So I really do need, um, a lot of information, and I appreciate as much communication and information as early as possible. Sometimes it is a little off-putting when, um, we hear about things, you know, not directly, but maybe through the community or through other avenues, um, things that are going on in the city that, you know, we probably should know about, and, um, we don't sometimes. So I would appreciate any increased communication wherever possible and being sure that we have all the information to make the decisions that are within our realm of decision-making.
Chris?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, I hope we are hearing everything as, uh, in a spirit of improvement and problem-solving. Um, and I'm just gonna, real quick, since we're running out of time, just kind of the six things that honked me off or, or confused me. I was a little, uh, disturbed by the, what seems to be like a dismissal of, uh, council member Bishop's, uh, request to have a priorities meeting that was asked for, you know, almost four months ago, it seems like. And then I, I never understood. That was asked for, you know, almost four months ago, it seems like. And then I, I never understood how a facilitator got inserted in there. Um, and you've all heard me bark about the FOP contract. I, I did not like the way that went at all. Um, I'm also concerned about the ARP money. Uh, we never discussed about having an RPC administrator for $400,000. We never discussed the two-concept plan. And we never discussed this timetable that we've been given that's been decided somehow. And I've got constituents screaming at me as to why it's gonna take so long for us to distribute the ARP money. Um, the license plate readers, that was put on the agenda September 20th as gun violence investigative tools. When you knew you were gonna talk about license plate readers. So I don't understand why it wasn't just put on the agenda as license plate readers. Um, the co-responder model, I did not understand that this was not a nine-eleven response unit. And that it was a follow-up unit. I never got that clearly. Maybe that's my fault during the discussions. And I didn't like, uh, the fact that on the California Avenue, uh, township residential program that we voted on it. And then on the next week that we were to fi- finalize that vote, it got changed with that special permit, 30-day stuff, that if council member Wilkin didn't catch, we would have really done real damage to the, uh, township. So those are just the things that I've noticed. And again, I, I'm hoping that we can just kind of improve and, and things out. Thanks.
Mary Alice, would you be willing to take the chair?
Sure, the chair recognizes Jay.
So I think it's easy because there were some documented pieces related to this last incident, to get focused on that. And, and of course, everyone knows that I have strong feelings about that piece. But I want to encourage us to think of that as an example, not as the totality, right? This is an opportunity for us to all clarify our preferences in terms of communication style, our ways of being able to navigate these situations. And I think it is important, right, to have this hearing. I am hoping we'll have a few minutes for Dave to dive into the, the weeds of, um, di- different roles as well. But to be able to start at this point, right, rather than going our four-year terms and having that tension, I hope that this is an opportunity for us to say, we've had some missteps. We've had some moments of tension that are unnecessary, unnecessary. We are all here to serve the people of Urbana. And so figuring out how do we more clearly communicate what everybody needs so that we can move forward collaboratively, I think is the most important thing. And I hope is what will come out of this conversation. Um, so that's, that's all I wanted to say.
All right, I release the chair back to Jay.
To any other council member, the mayor, if you want to jump in, and then we'll see if we can give Dave a couple of minutes.
Well, I appreciate the very honest feedback everyone's given tonight. I would ask people also to be um, understanding of the fact that we are still in a pandemic and you heard about the staffing, um, the impact on staff. Even if we were fully staffed, we're all working double time compared to what we were a year, two years ago. Um, we all appreciated the fact that, yes, with this many new council members, which is unprecedented. I can't remember this many new council members in one time. So that's why we did invest a great deal of time in all the training and extra sessions that we held before you were even seated. And, um, we need to all fully understand it's gonna, you know, it's gonna take a while to transition. Um, the idea about the priority-setting sessions, um, we've always, at least in my experience, have always had a facilitator for those. And, um, they never, they always would occur within the first six to eight months of being seated. So it wasn't like we were putting them off. It was just, you know, based on past experience. So, but, but again, it's like, I knew that, we knew that, but you didn't know that. So it was, it's the idea that we needed to share that information. Plus, we have all been faced, we now face a, a unprecedented opportunity to, to, um, spend $13 million in ARPA funds. And that's, um, that does require outside facilitation. And, um, many other cities, the, the governments around us all jumped in immediately. But many other cities around the country have, are taking their time and spending a little bit more time in preparation like Urbana. So it's not like we're the only city in the entire nation who hasn't decided how they're gonna spend their money. It's just our immediate neighbors have gone a little bit faster. But a lot of that is, is a function of staffing as well. But anyway, I'll let Dave, um, talk about.
I know Grace, Grace put her hand back up. It might be something too that we have to come back to. I know we don't, we haven't touched on council communication either. Um, but I'm hearing some, some thoughts of there are ways that we can all kind of communicate clearer and also recognizing that as new council members, we're gonna be coming in with different perspectives um, that staff may not have been aware of as well.
Well, I would say if you have suggestions on how best to communicate, just let us know. Send them to us.
Grace.
I was just gonna recommend that we, um, continue this discussion and, um, move, uh, keep a space for it at the council meeting next week. Um, as for time, since we're running out of time and didn't get to say everything. And hear from everyone.
Yeah, right. I'll take that as a recommendation. Can you second?
Sure, I'll second.
We've got a motion by Grace, a second by Mary Alice, to continue this discussion item during our next committee at the whole meeting.
All right, uh, council, next week.
Oh, next, the council meeting.
Yeah, unless objection.
It's best kept at a committee meeting, frankly.
Okay, the next committee. Is that okay? Uh huh. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
That motion carries. Um, so I guess we'll open it up for any quick council input and communication. Mary Alice.
Um, I'll try and be quick. I, I had a conversation with Lisa over at RPC today, um, about some of the, the issues with rental, with rental help. And I just wanted to kind of give a bit of background. So, uh, just like all other entities in our community and across the nation, that they're having staffing issues. And so they prioritize processing, um, processing both the applications is also getting the payments out. That's their top priority right now with their staffing. Um, I gave her the idea based on what, uh, I wrote down his name, I can't remember who it was, asked about having an FAQ added. Um, so she thought that was a good idea and she's gonna start working on something to add to the RPC website that would have that FAQ. Um, she is working on hiring somebody who would be available for open office hours. Um, so hopefully if that person does agree to take the position, they would be available so that people could stop in and just ask questions. Um, I also found out that they are processing 50 applications a day. Um, and that is on average, and that is up from about 20 to 30 pre, um, the eviction moratorium lifting up. Um, the other thing that I talked a little bit about is the fact that the verbiage in the application said that if it's not completed 100%, then it's just out. And she said, that's true, but you can resubmit the next day. So what they do is they look through all of the documents that you need to see if it's a complete application. If it's not a complete application, it'll say, I'm sorry, your application's not complete. You need to resubmit it and include these documents. So it's not like a one-and-done type of thing. Um, there's also a Dropbox right outside of the county building. So that if you're, need to drop off an application that is, um, that you're not there during the hours of operation, you can just go ahead and put it in the Dropbox. I'm trying to be really fast here. Um, and then the other thing that they started to add is they're giving out a timing document. So, um, when people drop off their application, they're, they're putting down the date that you dropped it off, the date that they can expect to have an answer uh, in terms of whether or not their application is approved and then the processing and so forth. So they're handing out a, a piece of paper so that people have a realistic expectation of the timing of all of the processing of it. And then a phone number at the end, if you don't get it within that expected timeframe. So I'm hoping those things will help, um, streamline some of the access to, to people who really do qualify for it. Um, she was pretty open to different ideas. And I, I posed the question about having somebody on the phones and he's trying to figure out. Sorry.
Folks didn't get to jump in. My clock says 11. This one says 11:01. So I believe we have to wrap it up for the night. So I think that being said, we have to adjourn our meeting.